Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our collective which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just for our role.
Thank you. First order of business tonight, we have a presentation from the Green Team.
We do. Some members of the Green Team have come down to talk to the council about all the things that we've been doing, and I want to invite Joanna Atlas to come up first.
Can you make that long? I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. I wore my heels. Good evening, Mayor Spear and all the members of the council. As you know, many of you know, that I am a former mayor of the town, and I'm currently the Chair of the Environmental Commission. And you may also be aware of my long involvement in environmental and sustainability issues in the town, like, over thirty years. For quite some time, I have been wanting to see a Green Team here and a sustainability program going on. Somehow, weren't able to get it off the ground, but I'm so pleased that Councilwoman Kathy O'Keefe has been able to do just that and get a Green Team together and off and running. So I really publicly want to thank you and commend you for your work on this. So, one of the first things that this group did, and it is a viable citizens group, and we're dedicated to creating a greener Ringwood. One of the first things the group did was to develop a mission statement, and it goes like this. "The mission of the Ringwood Green Team and its sustainable Ringwood program is to inspire a stronger, healthier, greener Ringwood through collaboration with residents, schools, businesses, nonprofits, and municipal government to ensure that the present needs of our community are met without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their needs." We are part of a larger effort, Sustainable Jersey, which is a nonprofit organization that provides tools, training, and financial incentives to support communities as they pursue sustainability programs. By supporting community efforts to reduce waste, cut greenhouse gas emissions, and improve environmental equity, Sustainable Jersey is empowering communities to build a better world for future generations. The Ringwood Green Team has only been in existence for a few months, but already we have received a PSENG grant in the amount of $2,000. This grant proposal was prepared by me and by our then municipal clerk, Kelly Hallowitz. Missing her already. These funds, which were delivered to the borough, are to be used for sustainable Ringwood, public outreach, and education. But the benefits of being part of Sustainable Jersey go beyond money. As we achieve their certifications, bronze, silver, gold, Ringwood will be recognized as a forward-thinking, environmentally-conscious, desirable community. This Thursday, some of us will be attending a Sustainable Jersey event where we will learn about some of the other available grant opportunities. We'll be looking at possible funding for the three areas that the Green Team has targeted as our objectives for the next few years. They are: one, building a healthy community; two, energy conservation; and three, connecting Ringwood for foot and bike traffic, for which we already have a comprehensive townwide plan. Clearly, these are ambitious goals, and progress toward achieving them will require many partnerships and the involvement of lots of individual volunteers. The backbone of Ringwood has always been its volunteers. We want to connect with a potential volunteer base with a call to action to meet the challenges of a future that may well be defined by climate change. No one can peer into the future and know with certainty what is ahead, but we can be prepared and be strong, healthy, and resilient. So I hope we have your continued support so we can move forward with this ambitious endeavor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joanna. Also, I think, Paula, you came down tonight to speak just to what Joanne was talking about, and Jamie, you also, right?
Yes. I'm Paula Tedesco, 95, Upper Lakeview.
Can you just say your last name for us? I'm sorry, I'm not really good at this.
Tedesco, T's in Tom, E.D. David, E.S. Sam, C.O.
Okay, thank you.
I moved to Ringwood about 2011, and I've only recently had the time to become active as a retired, after forty-plus years of being a psychiatric nurse practitioner. So I'm very interested in health and wellness, physical, mental, spiritual, environmental, et cetera, of our community. And in doing some research and becoming a member of the Green Team, there is, through Sustainable New Jersey, points that we already qualify for, and I was really pleased to see that, because we're already doing a lot. We have exercise programs for seniors, we have safety programs for children, we have sports programs for adults. So we are, we're doing it. But we need to get credit for it, and of course, some money. That would be great, right? So, in doing, again, my research, I've discovered that we have been participating in the mayor's wellness campaign for, I don't know how many years, but we are listed on the website as being part of it, okay? So the next step is, of course, there's always more, is getting a designation as a healthy town designation, which is like, again, another, like, being our bonnet, so to speak, to even stand out more as a town that's exemplary in terms of all of the things that we've been talking about. So that requires a little bit of legwork and collecting data and stuff like that, but I've already spoken to people in recreation and the town nurse, and they are, yay, let's do this. So I'm happy. All I need is a few more people, and we've got a team going. So that's what I want to do, and I'm happy to be living here. Thanks.
Thank you. And Paula just got a new member of her team, so...
Welcome to the 2018 council meeting. I'd like to, we have to get Ringwood Open Space Historic Society back to where it is, and the Passaic County Farming and Historic Society too, and New Jersey Historical Board of Education, every county board of education and historic societies are forming, and open spaces all throughout New Jersey, including Passaic County, a hundred percent.
Thanks, Mark.
Hi, everybody. Jamie Landis, 15 Mohican Court. I was tasked with helping out with the mayor's wellness campaign, which equips mayors and other key leaders with tools to develop and implement active, healthy lifestyles for their communities. Today, I had written a resolution that was hoping it would be adopted today at the meeting for us to be on board with the mayor's wellness campaign. One of the other things that I also want to say is that, just like Paula had said, and piggybacking off of it, was, in doing a lot of research, Ringwood is already implementing many of the programs that are part of this campaign. So that's really, I think, really important. We're already doing it, but now we're going to get credit for it. So I hope, obviously, you guys will read the resolution later, and that will be that. Thank you.
I think it's all of our consent.
All right. Thanks. Okay, so I want to thank you all for coming down and sharing what the team is doing. Just this month, we had three new members. We had Paula Tedesco, her daughter Annalisa Carreras, and Jamie Landis. So it is a team that's growing. We're working on a lot of other projects, other than the ones that you just heard about. I know we're doing the energy and efficiency for municipal facilities, and Scott could talk a little bit to how that's going.
Sure. I'm actually not doing it at this point. We're having, we have to gather all the data and all the stuff for the BPU and to get all the information together on all of our accounts and all of, for thirteen months, I think, of how much we've spent and our motors and our rampages, and we're in that process now. We have somebody actually in the finance office who's gathering that information. Once she gathers all that and gets that in, and I think, do you know how far along she is?
She's very close to being done.
Very close to being done. Then it's going to come to me, and then we're going to do site tours with them, and we're going to finish out the rest of this stuff. It's something that we participated in quite a few years ago, and it was very successful. And as you can see, I haven't changed the lights in the building, because they need to be replaced, but I refuse to do it until we can maybe get a grant so that we don't, we only have to pay for 25% instead of 100%. So that is underway. It's a lot of effort and paperwork on the back end.
It is.
But it pays dividends going forward.
And to that point, a couple of other entities in town, I know you reached out to Lakeland and Ringwood Schools and also the Good Shepherd Church.
Several churches have contacted us that they're going to participate in our program, and all of that is points for the Green Team.
Right, and right. And also the Weiss Center, I think.
The Weiss Center, yeah. They were, I think Weiss Center was the first one on board. I think before I sent the email out, they told me they were ready.
They were ready to go.
Yeah.
So it is a way to help everyone in the community. The other ones, I'll go through them quickly, that we're doing is the prescription drug safety and disposal. Carol Gardner is working with Sergeant Walker or Captain Walker on that. The Buy Fresh and Local Program, I think everybody was pleased to see the farmer's market back up and running this weekend, and I know that Joanne and Carol and other members of the community kept that running for so many years, and they were instrumental in helping bring it back. Also, the community shredding, paper shredding. This is an event that Orly Steinberg does once a year. She is going to participate with the Green Team and get all the paperwork in, to your point. We have a lot of these programs going on already, but this is just a handful of the items that are out there. This is something that everybody in the community can participate in. They have things for animals, for pets. There's a menu. Go to sustainablejersey.org, look at it. If you see something that makes your heart sing, raise your hand. Join us in moving Ringwood forward and getting grant money and helping to make it a better future for ourselves and our children. So thank you for coming down tonight, all of you.
Councilwoman, why don't you tell them the email address for the Green Team?
Ah, yes, the email address, I'm going to let you do that.
Okay. It's very simple, greenteam@ringwoodnj.net.
Yes, so please...
Greenteam@ringwoodnj.net.
And now that you mention it, a creative team is something we really want to get together here in Ringwood. There is so many artistic people. We have Friends of Ringwood Music, we have artists galore. If we can bring that community together, there's a lot of roadmaps and opportunities to build a stronger, creative team in Ringwood that can get the word out about our artistic opportunities. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, close for the Green Team. What they're looking for is an endorsement of their plan and a resolution authorizing me to enter into contracts with the people who they're going to do some of the social media with, because the Green Team is an advisory member to the council, so I need your authority just to move forward.
All right, do we have a resolution to that?
I didn't write a resolution. I just assumed that they were going to do it from the fly, but Mr. Klemek, I'm sure, could put one with, when we do resolutions later, just for a resolution so that we can continue on and get that done.
Okay. We will address that in the resolution section of the agenda.
Lots of activity and emails flying around. It's hard to keep up with everything that they're doing. It's great.
I'll put it under manager's report.
Okay, I want to thank you all for that. Thank you, Councilwoman. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have all three of these minutes ready to go?
We do.
Okay, first, I would like a, I'd like a motion to approve the business meeting minutes of May 15, 2018.
All were present.
All were present?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Noonan.
Second.
Second, Mr. Ferretti. Roll call on the approval of the minutes.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes. Next, a motion to approve the executive session minutes of the same date, May 15, 2018. All were present?
So moved.
Second.
Same roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Abstained.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda, general public comment. Anybody wish to address the mayor and council, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Try to keep your comments brief and non-repetitive.
Mayor, this evening, we have a, Nicole is kind enough, this is Nicole Langenmeyer. She's kind enough to help me with minutes this evening. It's going to be really important that we only have one speaking at a time so that we can try, and we're not as well-versed as Kelly was at trying to filter through all the talking that's going on, so we really need to try and have one at a time, if we at all can, so.
Very good.
I'm sorry.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Mike Shalingo. I live on High Mountain Road in Ringwood. Back in March, when we had those horrendous storms, one of those nor'easters had pushed one of my 60-foot cedar down onto the lawn and didn't break it, but knocked the communications wires down. I was waiting for the spring so that I thought it would go back in place, but it didn't. So my landscaper came back and cut it down and put it to its rest. I noticed that, though, there are other trees that are away from my property, in other words, further north of my property lines, that are damaged. And not three, four years ago, I spent over $1,000 in getting some of those trees that don't belong to me trimmed down so that they were not overbearing on my property. In fact, one of them, I had to get down because it was lifting the shingles on my roof on that side of the house. So I did a little digging, and I called Rockland Electric, and they said, oh, well, if it's not on the street wires primary, then we can't help you. I said, okay. I spoke to George, DPW. He said, Mike, they're really questionable. He said, and we don't kind of do that because that's not our property. And I said, well, George, if it's not yours, then it's not mine. Where do I stand? Where do I stand? So he said, well, you know, that's a paper street below you, and on and on. Mr. Heck and I spoke, and we came to the same conclusion. I pushed Rockland a little bit, and they came and trimmed some of those other branches off of one of the other trees that was clearly on the cross links to the pole. So they cleared that out. But now, all of that debris that they had cleared out is now hanging there, and it looks terrible. When I approached, when I received an estimate, it was about $700 to clear that. As Mr. Heck and I spoke and said, look, nothing's for nothing, I'm not looking for free lunch, but I'm looking for some help. I already spent $1,000 a couple of years ago clearing these trees. What about giving me some help financially in getting them done? And that's why I'm here. I'm here to plead my case, so to speak, because if it were a southeaster that came and damaged those trees, they'd push them down onto that paper roadway, and the Ringwood would have to come, and it would be their responsibility to clear them. So this was a nor'easter on my property, and now I'm kind of stuck.
Mayor, we did speak, and he did speak to George, and fortunately, some people up the road had the same, some of the same issues. But generally speaking, when there's property lines, we only take care of what's in the right-of-way. That's been a longstanding policy, because we have 150 lane miles of road in Ringwood, and so if we were doing this all over, we'd just need a tree crew. Now, I did have the guys go clean up some of the stuff, because Rockland Electric absolutely did cut it and just leave it there, which they typically do. So the stuff that was in the right-of-way side, I had my guys take away. There is some stuff up in his yard that's further away from the right-of-way, but our policy is that we usually don't go onto private property for a whole host of reasons, insurance reasons, all kinds of stuff, and we don't do anything, the Borough of Ringwood doesn't do anything with wires. If there's wires involved, we don't touch them at all. So he does have a little bit of a mess on the lake side of his property. I would guess that's the, I'm not sure what side of it is, but...
Yeah, that's the, it's really the north.
Yeah, so...
It's the north piece of that property.
I mean, I could take a look at it and see what I can, see if there's something more that we can do. We did do some, but obviously, we can't, you know...
Right.
If we did it for everybody, it would be a problem, so...
It would be a problem.
Maybe...
It would be unsustainable, would be to chase down everybody's trees wherever they go.
Right, right.
But a, paper streets are killers, because paper streets, you know, they might be 50 foot wide on paper, but they actually look about 20 foot wide. People have taken them over, and where the right-of-way is, is, you know, is questionable. You need to actually go out there and survey it to find these things out.
I think it might actually be beach property. I'm not sure, or lake property. I'm not sure it's a paper right-of-way underneath you, but I would have to look in the tax map again.
Okay.
All right, so you, would you be able to take a look at that and see what...
Sure, and I have your number. I'll take a look again and give you your...
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Seeing no one move to close. I counted the 30.
Mike Flynn, 415 Stonetown Road. I just came up tonight to talk about the county roads. Starting to look better. The DPW went out there, did a fantastic job at the intersection of Slotsburg Road and Greenwood Lake Turnpike. The work that they've been doing on the side of Skyline Drive, starting to look really good. Unfortunately, just opposite the Skyline Drive side, where they fixed up beautifully, Orange Rockland, with their power improvements, have left stumps, junk, it looks like crap. And I was wondering if we could reach out to them and see if they could come back in and at least stump it, do something, instead of leaving it as an eyesore. It does look bad. The county roads are in bad shape. That's why I'm here tonight, to talk about litter. So, I was going to say about Orange, if you can look into that.
Okay, sure.
The litter with the county, I've been looking at the same litter now for three to five years in certain spots on the northern section of Greenwood Lake Turnpike. Total eyesore. The southern end had been cleaned up voluntarily by a small group from Ringwood about three years ago. I haven't seen them out in a while. I know it's a county road, and it's an issue for liability reasons to clean it up, so maybe we could reach out to the county. And then, the last item on the list is the North Jersey District Water Supply and the fences on the east side of Slotsburg Road. That's Block and Lot 5071, definitely belongs to North Jersey District Water Supply. Block 508, that's Slotsburg Road, excuse me, Greenwood Lake Turnpike. All the fences on the north side of the road, they definitely own that property. They've been claiming that they don't, and it's state property. If you go to the tax map, it's clear. They do own it.
Talking about that a little bit later.
Okay. At the same time, they do have a meeting next Wednesday at 9:00 in Wanacue. If there's any residents from Ringwood that could attend that meeting during public participation and talk to the new council that's down there, they might be a little bit more inclined to help us out. Other than that, I appreciate that little bit of work, that triangle, every little bit helps, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Can you just spell your last name for us for the...
Flynn, F-L-Y-N-N.
Motion to close public portion.
Motion, second to close public. Roll call on closing public, please.
Hold on a second. Hold on.
Oh, you didn't see that coming?
Close public. Go ahead. First is who?
Rob.
Rob. Second?
Me.
And we go, O'Keefe.
Okay, so councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Poor Nicole, I kind of just threw into this job tonight, so she's, you know, she's a little nervous about it to begin with, so bear with us.
Okay. We have no old business this evening, so we will move into new business, introduction by title of ordinances. Counselor?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I have a motion to read by title ordinance number 201807?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Okay. An ordinance, a bond ordinance appropriating $800,000 and authorizing issuance of $760,000 in bonds or notes of the borough for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the Borough of Ringwood and the County of the State of New Jersey. I'll recite a resolution. Resolve that ordinance number 201807 is hereby introduced, and as municipal clerk is hereby authorized and directed, publish a copy of said ordinance and notice appearing in the official newspaper of the municipality with the public hearing to be held on July 17, 2018, at 7:30 p.m. after the municipal building. The motion is seconded and discussed.
Do we have a motion on that resolution?
Move it.
Mr. Davison?
Second.
Mr. Bolton? Any discussion? Mr. Heck, do you want to fill us in a bit on...
Sure. Throughout the process, the Finance Committee has met to talk about some of our capital programs, as well as the budget, throughout the course of January till now. I met also met with the engineer, and every year, we come up with a capital list of roads that we would like to pave and programs, drainage we would like to do, and capital projects we would like to start. I will tell you that we have a longer list than we can possibly do in a year, as the council's well aware of. But we're talking about an $800,000 bond to take care of a few items. Drainage being the largest portion, about $37,000 for police equipment, which would be, I think there's some radar stuff, there's some camera stuff for the cars that are well outdated, I think they're 10 or 12 years old at this point, need to be updated, and some communication items that we need to complete. And also, one DBW truck, the one truck that we're talking about is out in the back. It's a 1999, it was built in 1999, we received it in two... We received it in 2000, it's titled in 2000. So, we've got a useful life out of it. It's got very little miles on it, but as you can see from looking at it, it doesn't hold oil well, and it is rotten away, and it's, the transmission is shot, and guys have to wear earmuffs to drive it, because it's very loud. But it's a snow, it's our primary snow vehicle for Stonetown. It's all-wheel drive, because some of the terrain in Stonetown's tough. So, those are the items that we're talking about. The roads that we, that the engineer has identified are as follows. We replaced would be a full mill and pave. Portions of Peters Mine Road, especially in the O&R area. Lake Riconda Drive, full mill and pave. Olive Lane, gutter mill and pave. Upus Court, full mill and pave. Teak Court, full mill and pave. Redwood Lane, gutter mill and pave. Tomahawk Path, which is a gutter mill. Arrowhead Trail, which is a gutter mill. Seminole Drive, which is a gutter mill. Anywhere where there's curbs, we have to mill down the edge of the road, so that we don't lose the curb as we pave. I said Seminole Drive. Ricker Drive would be a full mill, and it would pave and create a crown for drainage. The DPW yard has to be paved. And I also have Borough Hall Lot in here, although we have funding in place to pave this. We can't have people chipping and falling anymore in Borough Hall parking lot, because you can't plow the ice and snow out of it. So, those are the items for the paving for this particular program. We're also doing the engineering and the prep work for the Erskine Road, Lakeview Avenue next program, which we're going to be doing for our DOT grant, which we receive for $500 and some thousand dollars. So, we're already starting that program in terms of the engineering. Probably won't be doing, any work done on it until next year, but we're going to do that the same way we did Cup Saw Drive. We're going to do it in phases, and we're going to use the DOT grants to the degree that we can to get that taken care of. So, that's the details of the proposed bond. And all of this has, I think, a 9.4-year useful life, as outlined in the bond that's attached, so it'll be spread over that amount of years. What they do is they take the average of all the costs and the useful life of each item, and they develop a payback period. And that's what the bond council does, and I think this one is 19.4. 9.4, yeah. So, there are no other questions, Mayor?
Do we have any additional discussion or questions regarding the bond ordinance?
We looked at that truck. That's pretty rough, that truck.
Yes.
Yeah, and we did talk about possibly leasing trucks as opposed to purchasing trucks. Is there a benefit to going with the lease since...
Sometimes, sometimes a lease program, like, it depends on the program that's available at the time. We leased a loader, because it was beneficial for us to do that.
Right.
It was better financing, but it's really, leasing in municipal government versus purchasing, it's really, it's really a purchase program. It's just different creative financing, because at the end, you have a dollar buyout anyway. So, you're really buying it. You're just, you're not giving it back at the end. Sometimes, you can do a lease program for some projects. We have not found that where you hand it back in five years to be beneficial for all the times we've researched it, but the lease with a dollar buyout, because like, that truck is 19 years, we've used it, so we've got a lot of use out of that particular truck, even though it doesn't have a lot of miles, it had a lot of time. So, it depends. We usually look at that when we decide to go out, are we going to go out to bid? We put the funding in place, and then we can still decide. Just because you put it in the bond ordinance, doesn't mean you have to go with purchase. You can decide how you want to acquire the vehicle down the road. So, you can, you can still make that decision as we authorize the bids and the awards.
And as for paving, I know at one point, we used to pay as we go.
Yes.
And I know bonding might have made sense when costs were low and interest rates were low, but with the cost of going up and the interest rates going up, is this something that we can have a plan going forward to move away from?
We talked about, and the Finance Committee, it would be very difficult, especially in the declining, you know, I've been saying for a long time that we have to do something about our income. We can cut our costs forever, but if we don't replace income somehow, it's a problem. It would be very difficult to switch from paying for the roads through the bonds, and then also saving and paying for the, so the people today would be paying for the bonds to take care of the roads that we've already paved, and you'd be asking them to pay for the roads that we're paving now. So, you, the people that are living here in the now would almost be asking them to pay both ends. You'd be asking them to pay on the tail on the other ones and the future costs, so it's hard. There are some towns that have successfully managed to go from a bonding program to a pay-as-you-go, but it takes capital to do that, and you have to have the wherewithal to put the, you know, the money aside, so that you can build up a kitty, so you can do that.
Well, we do know how often roads need to be paved, right? Like, we could set up a schedule of some sort?
There is, we have...
There has to be some kind of...
I provided the schedule to you guys in the early meetings, but...
You can, you can, you can list the roads that need to be fixed in some kind of priority.
Right.
But you can't really look going, going ahead, which the next roads are going to be in five or 10 years. But the bigger...
But you have an average life cycle, like of 9.4 years for what we're bonding for, so...
Well, that's, well, that's across, that's also added across the other, the other stuff.
Yeah, the truck and the equipment.
And we don't go, we certainly do not try to pave on like a 10-year cycle. I mean, you wouldn't see pavement every 20 years.
Well, I know it wouldn't be a 10-year cycle, but I would assume there's some type of cycle.
The bigger problem would be, you know, just, just this year, we cut our spending like $140,000, still ended up with a pretty large tax increase. In order to do a paving program of, that's economical, you don't want to be doing paving $70,000 at a shop. You'd want to do a larger program. You're going to have a bunch of disruption around town, and trucks running around. So, we'd have to be saving up for a couple of years, and then hope for one of those, hope that we don't get one of those state government type of sleight of hands, where they tell us we can't have a, we can't have too much surplus, or we don't get any more aid. Because that kind of crushed us back in 2010, 2009, 2010, somewhere in there. That's kind of where this, where our point of view shifted on this.
Also, you can't really, you can't really, there's not a set standard for what road needs to be paved when. Really, you'll notice that since I came here, I do a lot of drainage, because the roads fail because of bad drainage.
Right.
And a lot of these roads were old, summer roads, that they slowly converted. They add pipes to the center, and they made it wider, and then they filled it in, and they paved, and they were never built correctly. You'll notice, any paving program, on the last sheet of what I gave you guys is the drainage lists of everything that needs to be done. Everywhere we go, we do the drainage, so that we can get longer life. When you start to see alligator cracks and things in the road, it's because there's water underneath it, and there's drainage problems. And the last bunch of years have really had an effect on our roads in town. As an example, Apache Trail was paved for the first time since it was put in 40 years ago. But then, we have other streets that we're repaving at 15 years. So, as we make the improvements that we need to make, you're going to see, you're going to stretch out your paving program further and further. So, it's...
The length of time will be longer on the road.
Yes, correct. So, that's why we...
So, that might help us move into pay-as-you-go. Okay.
I think if we were going to do a pay-as-you-go, I would like to see us go for a pay-as-you-go on vehicles before we do capital and programs, because vehicles generally range, last between five and 20 years, 15 years. They're generally on the shorter term. You know, it's like police cars, all the SUVs, we're allowed to bond. I never bond them. We buy the police cars for cash, because, just because you can bond them, doesn't mean you should bond them.
Right.
So, if we're going to do that, I would suggest do the vehicle fleet first, and then go into some of the other capital programs.
Right. And we talked about a fleet inventory, possibly doing.
Yep.
I know that you did send an inventory.
Right.
But again, with sustainable jersey, we can hopefully improve the fleet for full inventory.
Right.
Okay.
No problem.
And I will say, I know that we certainly can't pivot on a dime, and we definitely didn't want to leave grant money on the table, but I think it's good to at least look at what pay-as-you-go might look like, and how we could get there over time. I think it would take, obviously, it's a weaning process, and it would be either more or less appealing, depending upon what the numbers look like, but at least we could have those scenarios at hand, so that...
I think, over the next three years, where we have the reduction of taxes from the reservoir, I think we need to fund for that, and we're going to talk later about some devastating news we got on garbage bids. So, I think our focus is going to have to be on that to stabilize taxes. But yes, down the road, we should try to see what we can do to get some type of financial picture, that we can maybe go back at least partially to what we used to do. So, I think we're at...
Any further discussion?
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, 201808, a motion to read by title, please.
So moved. Second. Roll call, please. I'm sorry, who was the first?
Yeah, Mr. First.
Oh, that was Mr. Noonan?
And then Bolton was the second, right? Okay. Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Okay, an ordinance amending Chapter 11, Parks and Recreation Areas. A revised ordinance of the Borough of Ringwood to increase fees. I'll recite a resolution. Be it resolved that ordinance number 201808 is hereby introduced, and further, that municipal clerk be it is hereby directed to publish a copy of said ordinance in the official newspaper of the municipality with public hearing to be held on July 17, 2018, at 7:30 p.m. at the municipal building.
Motion to second and discuss. Okay, do we have a, do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Heck, do you want to...
Very briefly, some of these, some of these programs are just new programs that the recreation has added. The robotics, or, you know, computer programming has been very successful. The events, obviously, we know what that is with our celebration coming up. Special Olympics, they're developing ranges, so depending upon what program they come forward with, they can fit it within this range. Our program, and music program, and clinics, so these are just all expanded programs where they need a larger area where they can, they can set the fees, because remember, recreation is pretty much self-sustaining.
With the music program that's in here, is that something we always had? Because I know they had a music camp down at Bireson.
No, these are all, these are all new programs. What...
Who's running the music program?
I don't know who's, I'd love to tell you that I know that, I don't know that, but...
Okay.
Our rec director has tried to fill in, like, the robotics was, robotics that came from the school, and the library took it over in conjunction with recreation, and now recreation is going to do it completely. The same thing with the art and music program, so it's kind of filling in for some of the voids that the school no longer is doing. So, it's trying to help, anyway, so. But I don't know who actually is running it.
Yeah, I'd like to learn more about it. I'll check with the...
Good. So, we need a motion and a second.
Yeah, no, we have a motion and a second. We want the, if there's no further discussion, we'll take a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Okay, a motion to read by title, ordinance 201809, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 201417, fixing the salaries of the employees of the Borough of Ringwood, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, as negotiated with United Public Service Employees Union. Resolution be it resolved that ordinance number 201809 is hereby introduced, and further, that municipal clerk is hereby directed to publish a copy of said ordinance in the official newspaper of the municipality, public hearing at 7:30 p.m. on July 17, 2018, at the municipal building.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Heck, this is, we approved the contract that such as, that included this, these salary increases and such. So, this is just codifying what was in that contract and putting into our salary ordinance.
And for, for the background, for those of you who are listening here today, the union contract expired in 2006, the end of 2016, so this is actually a 17, 18, and 19 It's essentially a three-year contract for salary and wages and benefits, 2% per year. There's a lot of things that are in the contract that we approved back in, I think, January or December, I'm not sure which, that talk about insurance changes, and trying to encourage people to go to other insurance programs that are more economically feasible. Longevity's disappearing, and so there, so along with the 2% raises that the employees are receiving, there's union givebacks and things that are no longer in the contract. We've frozen longevity. We've changed sick time and vacation time and that kind of stuff. So, anyway, these are the contracts that were settled quite some time ago, and this is the enabling legislation. What an ordinance does is, even though there's a contract settled, we need a salary ordinance so that there's transparency, and people can see exactly what everybody's getting paid within, within the building and the ranges. So, while you can change an ordinance at any time, I just question everybody that when there's a contract in place, if you change it, and it affects a member of that bargaining unit, obviously, the union's going to have something to say about it, so...
We can do what we want, but with consequences.
Correct, yes. So, but they, the raises don't go into effect until there's a first reading, there's a second reading, then there's a 20-day stopgap period, and then we do retros. All of the raises for 17 were budgeted in 17. All the raises in 18 were also budgeted, so that we contained it, we went through this with the Finance Committee early on, so this isn't going to have any other impact than what we have already planned for.
Makes for a very nice paycheck.
Well, makes for a big tax bill.
I'll add to it, yes.
I did have a question about the Borough Clerk, now that it's going to a part-time position.
That's not, that's not in this ordinance, though.
Oh, though it isn't, okay.
That's, that's in the, that one coming up.
The next one, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Take a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Hey, this would be 10, uh, motion three by title, ordinance 2018-10.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 2014-09, fixing the salaries and compensation of the offices and employees of the Borough of Ringwood County of Passaic State of New Jersey. Resolution be it resolved, that ordinance number 28-10-09, I'm sorry, it should be 10, uh...
Yeah, that was revised, it's in green at your desk there, Mr. Klimak.
Okay, yeah, okay. Is hereby introduced, and further, that municipal clerk be it hereby directed to publish a copy of the ordinance in the official newspaper of the municipality with the public hearing on July 17, 2018 at 7:30 p.m. at the Municipal Building.
Uh, do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mr. Heck, do you?
Yeah, this is, this is the same period of time, this is the non-union members of the, of the building that generally follows traditional, has been following whatever the union members receive, and this is the same thing for 17, 18, and 19. These are things like my salaries and council members and captain for the police and chief of police and, you know, so forth, so judge, prosecutors, this is the, the, there's a few non-union people, and this is what that is. Same 2%.
Right.
So I did have a question about the borough clerk. I see that it's going from a full-time position to a part-time position. I did have a concern about that because Kelly worked very closely with the Green Team to make sure that we got all of our paperwork in, got everything, all our i's dotted, our t's crossed, to make sure that we could get the grant, that we did, and we would need that support from the municipality going forward. Would that no longer be able to be supported by a part-time person, or how would we be able to support that going forward?
Well, I don't know that we would assign the clerk in a part-time position to handle that type of thing.
Right.
As I, we talked about it before, I, that's something that I might provide to our Planning Board Secretary or something along those lines.
Kelly, Kelly had experience with the prior iteration of the Green Team.
Right, she did.
Kelly, Kelly had a good idea of the program going in before you came in, so, so she was the obvious choice, you know, given our, you know, given, 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 given the talent pool we have, it was obvious that that went to Kelly. Where that would go next is, you know, to be determined.
I will tell you that I had both the part-time position on here that I recommend at this point and the full-time, but the committee asked me to take the full-time position off because they, we were really trying to gear it towards a part-time if we possibly could, so originally we left both on. We could put both on, you could put a salary range in here, you could really do anything.
For a part-time, how many hours would that be per week, would you say?
At this point, we're...
What is it defined?
Right now, we're trying to determine, at the last council meeting we talked about, I wanted to get into the office, find out exactly what the clerk did, because again, Kelly did this for so long, she did this long before I was here, and, and decide what functions she was doing as a deputy borough manager, what functions other people could do, and what were actually just identified as clerk functions, and we're getting a good handle on that now, and, and as well as the people in the office, what, what they, what their capabilities are, what expanded abilities they might be able to, capabilities they can take on, so I'm not really prepared to tell you how many hours a week, because it's only been two weeks now that I've been sitting down there, so I'm learning a lot.
Seems like longer.
Seems like, it seems like eternity, you know, there's some mornings you'll see me here at 5:30 in the morning and, you know, lights are on, and I now find people knock on the door when they see lights are on and when they're dropping off their, their tax payments, but, um, so I, I'll be better prepared by the next meeting to give a recommendation to you guys as to what we should do, and then obviously, the clerk's position is not something that I hire, that's something that, uh, the body decides whether they want full-time, part-time, or...
Well, I assume that the idea of going part-time is to do cost savings on health insurance, right? Health insurance would not be offered to a part-time employee?
Depends on how many hours, but yes, generally speaking, no.
Right, so what is the hours, and I would think that would be the hours that would determine what would be part-time or full-time?
I would suggest, I, I would probably strongly suggest we stay under 25 hours.
Under 25 hours, okay, so for a part-time position of 25 hours at 40,000, that seemed a little, I don't know, high to me for a part-time position.
This is just a recommendation based upon what other communities have done with either shared services or other part-time employees, and that's all that is. You could put any range in there that you want.
Could, okay.
Yeah, you, you guys, like, right now, you could amend this to say...
35,000?
Well, you could amend it at future times also.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't set at this, because you don't have anybody in this position.
So it just can be handled when we get the candidate and we're hiring?
Or right now, you could say, put in a range in there from 25 to 40, you could, I mean, you could do that this evening if you wanted. I'm just not prepared to, we only filled something in there because the salary ordinance was, and I don't like to publish twice, that's, that's really the problem, so I try to save money with the newspapers if we possibly can. So you can amend that if you want, add a range, right now, we could just, um, we can, the council can decide.
You can make a motion to, to do that.
Amend it, yeah.
What is the, my other fellow council people think on this one?
You're just setting the range, you're not fixing it, you're just setting it.
Right, okay, so what, I make a motion to do 25 to 40?
Second.
Second?
Okay, so...
With a 2%, that, that's in 25 to 40 in the year 2018.
2018, right.
With a 2% increase to that for the year 2019, whatever that numbers may, may work out to be.
Correct. Okay, now, this is going to really mess Nicole up.
Oh, sorry.
But what we're going to do is, we're just going to say we have a motion and a second.
To amend the pending...
To amend.
To amend 2018 number 10. And I'm saying it out loud so the tape gets it. To reflect a range of 25 to 40 for the year, calendar year 2018, with the appropriate 2% range increase for 2019. Really disliking Kelly right now, and we have a first and a second.
Second on that? Okay, roll call on amending...
2018-10.
2018-10.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
And you're really going to not like me.
Oh, no.
And hopefully this question doesn't actually result in a change, hopefully it's just a clarification, otherwise it could have all been in together.
If I bring that mic closer, because we can't hear you well.
See, that's how you know I think I'm going to get in trouble. If I recall correctly, we had talked about folding in one of the water titles and the duties just directly into the DPW?
We talked about it, I didn't do it because you didn't, you guys didn't give me instruction to do that. The superintendent of water is separated out, we're never sure why, except that the, there's an ordinance that makes the Director of Public Works the superintendent of water, that's why that is. Doesn't have to be this way, you could roll that in, or you could leave it as it is, it really doesn't, either way, it doesn't, it doesn't much matter. That's really whatever you folks decide.
Now I'm feeling like complicating things on the fly, um, being bad, but if the intent is always to have it filled by the same office and the same body, better to fold it in for clarity as opposed to acting like it could hypothetically be somebody doing the job for $7,000 a year.
Correct.
And I apologize, I missed that in the...
Yeah, it's, it's an ordinance that, that ties those two together, so. So that's, that's up to you.
I don't know, how does, how does the body feel? It's, it's been done this way for, forever, hasn't caused any problems. I don't see, you know, I don't see a reason to change it, but how do we feel? Do we have a motion and a second to pull that title out of this ordinance, add that salary into the Director of Public Works salary?
So...
Is that what we seem to seek to do?
So that would raise the, um, Director of Public Works from...
It would increase that, that, well, it goes there anyway, the ordinance, it's just separated out.
It's already in there? It's, I mean, we wouldn't be raising that?
Uh, you would raise the Director of Public Works salary by the 6,000, say, the 6,892, looking at calendar year 2018. Superintendent of Water is a $6,892 stipend, say.
So that would bring Director of Public Works to...
That would be added, rolled into the Director of Public Works salary.
About 120,000.
No, currently, the, the superintendent of water is the Director of Public Works.
Oh, they're the, one and the same.
So that, it's one of the same, it's just it's separated out in this particular ordinance.
Well, I think it makes sense what Ryan's saying, if it's one body, one person, why have two titles?
Somewhere along the way, we have two titles, and, and we, and we said that the superintendent of water shall be the DPW Director.
I don't want to have someone have to take something off their resume, but...
No, it kind of all rolls together.
I don't think he really cares, one way or another.
Hopefully that resume's not up to date, otherwise we're all in trouble.
So, uh, do you, do we, do we have a motion to, to make that change as well in, in ordinance number 2018-10?
Yes, for Clark, so it would be, actually, you're taking that salary, adding it to Public Works, just so it's...
Correct, we're removing the title Superintendent of Water, we are shifting that salary to the...
Because the title stays Superintendent of Water, but it's a zero.
The title will stay, yeah.
Zero, okay.
Oh, we can't get rid of the title?
Only by ordinance.
We have, uh, the, the titles refer to in the ordinance.
Okay, all right, so you're adding, okay.
So then, probably just drop it.
Might as well leave it.
Um, then, then it's just making one.
Just made Nicole's whole night.
But I scared you.
Yeah?
No, I was, I was just trying to simplify, not complicate, so.
Okay, so we still need a, if there's no further, no further discussion, which I'm confident there, there is not, um, we'll take a, a roll call, please, on having our second reading, public hearing on Tuesday, July 17, 2018, for this revised ordinance 2018-0, uh, -10.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Um, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, go down, Council, you've got two more to go.
Okay, uh, motion for 2018-11, please, to read by title.
So moved.
Second.
Who said the second?
That's Mr. Ferretti.
Thank you.
We get a roll call, please, on reading by title.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 2015-06, fixing the salaries of the employees of the Borough of Ringwood County of Passaic State in New Jersey as negotiated with the Ringwood Police Dispatchers Association. Be it resolved, that ordinance number 20, oh, uh, 2018-11 is hereby introduced, and further, that municipal clerk is directed to publish a copy of the said ordinance in the official newspaper of the municipality with a public hearing to be held at 7:30 p.m. at the Municipal Building, Ringwood, New Jersey on July 17, 2018.
So moved.
I'm sorry, who's the second?
Second.
Any discussion?
How many dispatchers do we have?
Well, we have, uh, I think...
I know you keep changing, but...
We have, we have, we have full-timers and we have part-timers, so I don't know exactly the total number. This is the full-time, uh, uh, contract, um, and, and I think we have three, one, two, we have four full-time dispatchers right now. And by way of explanation, what we've tried to do with this is the dispatchers got a little bit of an increase because they were behind some of the, when we wanted to retain some of our seasoned dispatchers. Remember, they're the first line for the public and for the police department. When you're calling, I, I sit at that desk often when there's a crisis and, you know, Nina or somebody says, "Sit down and start answering the phone," because it's, it's chaotic. I do have a, a video that I'd love for the council members to see, three at a time, obviously, we can't do all of you, that shows what it's like to be in the dispatch center and what it's like for the police, so that you can see, some of it's a little bit of graphic at times, but you can see kind of what they go through. So there is a one-time adjustment, and this is, again, contractual, which is all settled, but I'm just trying to outline for the public and everybody else what, what this actually is. And then once that one-time adjustment is settled, and I think it's about $3,600, then it's a 2% increase for, again, 17, 18, and 19, because all the employees here, contract with the exception of the police, expired at the end of 2016. So this really is just putting the salaries for the two categories, those hired before a certain period and after a period of time, in these categories for those individuals.
And I will say, as I remember from the conversations around keeping the dispatchers, that, that we do have the benefits of having people who actually know the roads and the neighborhood in town. You call 911, you want somebody who knows the difference between Glen Road and Mount Glen Road and sends people to the right part of town.
Often, when you call 911, you do go to the county, get it sent up here, and, but I will tell you, there's been a lot of talk over the years about privatizing dispatch and, and I will tell you, that is a disaster. I see what these folks do, and there, and there's a difference between Windbeam Lane and Windbeam Loop, uh, you know, and there's a difference between Cupsaw Avenue and Cupsaw Drive, and, you know, there's, like, and these folks that work in dispatch, they, they often know the people that are called, they know the names, they, you know, it's, it's very, very helpful. You don't get the same, uh, service that you get out of our dispatchers because they're all basic residents, so. Kind of the unsung heroes of the police department.
Further discussion? Want to take a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, regarding the next one, 2018-12, I ask that be held until after the executive session. In fact, I'd like to discuss it in the executive session as part of another subject, although we'll be discussing that.
Very good, Councilman.
Is that already listed, Mr. Klimak, or no?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Oh, yes, okay.
Very good. Thank you. Now the tricky part, Mr. Heck.
Nah, this is easy, this is the easy part.
Moving on to resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2018-125, whereas the Chief Financial Officer has certified the funds are available for the payment of this current bill list in the amount of $3,174,496.01, and the supplemental payments in the amount of $496,440.10, the merchant services fees in the amount of $126.39 to the following-named accounts, for a total of $3,671,062.50.
Do we have a motion?
Move it.
Davison?
Second.
O'Keefe?
Approximately $3 million of this is going to Passaic County.
I was going to say, who's the big winner this time around? Thank you. Any discussion on the bill list? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
I'm staying.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, we're going to do these slow, because I've never done liquor license renewals before, this is a new experience for me. Mr. Klimak, you'll help me through this, right?
Okay.
Okay, this is 2018-126. Do you read these, or do you want me to read them?
I could read them, if you'd like.
No, I, I can read them, it's no problem, I just didn't know if you, be resolved, the Council of the Borough of Ringwood hereby approves the renewal of the following liquor license for the state of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Alcohol and Beverage Control fiscal 2018 through 2019, effective July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019, and this is for license number, um, 161133006010, which is our restaurant. Everything's in order from the, uh, from...
From the police department.
From the police department and the licensing.
And you have a tax clearance.
And the tax, tax clearance for...
Division of Taxation on all of them.
On all of these this evening, yes, yes.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
2018-127, be it resolved, the council of the borough of Ringwood hereby approves the renewal of the following liquor license for the state of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Alcohol and Beverage Control for fiscal year 2018, 2019, effective January, July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, for this is Monahan Restaurant, 16, excuse me, 161133007-012.
Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
2018-128, be resolved that the council of the borough of Ringwood hereby approves the renewal of the following liquor licenses, for the state of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Alcohol and Beverage Control for fiscal 2018 through 2019, effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, this is Vicat Inc., license 161144004007.
Motion, please.
Where, what, who's Vicat?
Vicat is, it's...
Okay, you're gonna talk about the old bar that's down on Skyline Lakes Drive over at the Green Bay Turf Bike, and what the bar was back in the day, is it, we're gonna have this discussion again, right? Is it those guys?
I'm sorry, I don't remember which one, they just changed their name, so I don't remember which one it is, but they just changed their name, and keep in mind, Kelly did all of these, and I'm just following through at the end here.
But it's that one.
I think it's Ringwood Wine and Liquors in the shopping center, I believe, but I'm, but I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, that's different.
If you want, I'll go pull the files, they're in, they're right on our desk, and, if you would like me to. No.
Quite, quite.
Just curious.
Everything is in order with the police chief and the state department of taxation, so we're, we're good.
And the ABC. We need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Roll call, please.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
2018-129, be resolved that the council of the borough of Ringwood hereby approves the renewal of the following liquor license for the state of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Alcohol and Beverage Control for fiscal 2018, 2019, effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, and this is Reku Sushi LLC, 161133001008. You couldn't ask me where this one was, this one I would've known, but...
Well, on this one, I, I'm just curious, because they don't sell alcohol, to the best of my knowledge, at least when I go in.
There's different kinds of licenses, they don't, they don't have packaged goods, but they have...
They do sell.
They do, they do have, yeah.
They have a liquor license.
They're not giving me the good menu.
They have wine.
Good to know.
Sockeye?
Yes.
Maybe it's just me?
Yes, the socky?
No, yes, that they do have.
Okay.
Then I'm even more on board with it.
Will we give them a roll call? Would you, would you pass them, or would you, would you move it?
I would move it. I'm so excited, I'd move it.
Thank you. A second for Mr. Noonan, and we'll take a roll call from there.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
2018-130, be it resolved, the council of the borough of Ringwood hereby approves the renewal of the following liquor license for the state of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Alcohol Beverage Control for fiscal 2018, 2019, effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, this is MVA Associates, Maggie's, license number
So moved.
Mr. Noonan?
Second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ferretti. Roll call, please.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
2018-131, be it resolved that the council of the borough of Ringwood hereby approves the renewal of the following liquor license for the state of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Alcohol and Beverage Control for fiscal 2018, 2019, effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, Sheree Narai, I'm not sure how to say that, license number 161132005006, and I believe this is the old Byright slash O'Hara slash, I'm going way back, Liquors, down next to the gas station in Skyline.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Davison? Roll call, please.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
2018-132, be it resolved that the council of the borough of Ringwood hereby approves the renewal of the following liquor license for the state of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Alcohol Beverage Control for fiscal 2018, 2019, effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, and this is for the Skyline Lakes Property Owners Association, license number 161131010002. Jim's not here to defend it.
I'm not even gonna make a joke about assigning it to another lake. We wouldn't do that. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ferretti, we will remove that notation that's on the bottom of this resolution.
Hold on. Oh, that'll be removed before it goes out, that was...
Yep, that's, that's, we just carried that for the past, how many years?
That's Kelly's notes.
Yep. Roll call, please.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Mayor, that's the end of liquor licenses.
Excellent.
You know, although, you have to stay later and sign these things, because I have to upload them tonight.
We have no time, yeah.
You have, yeah, we have to get them, because I have to get the licenses out to all the businesses by tomorrow.
I appreciate it.
So, Nicole, don't let him leave. Resolution 2018-133, resolution of the borough of Ringwood County, Passaic, state of New Jersey, in support of Senate Bill 888 entitled, "An Act Concerning the Rate of Taxation Under the Sales and Use Tax in Certain Municipalities and Supplemental PL 1966-C30 amended." This is a, this was put on by one of the council members, I'm not sure who requested this. Mr. Klimak, do you want to add anything?
Well, this is, this is a proposed bill by three, three members of the legislature, I think they're our local legislators.
Yeah, Robertoff, Holly Schapezi, and Senator Panaccio.
What it is, is to reduce to, because we're in the Highlands, and we, we carry enough financial burdens that benefit the rest of the state, it's a proposal to reduce the sales taxes that are charged in this municipality by at least 50%. It's a start, to see if we can get some relief, considering the burden that we, we take to provide clean water for other parts of the state.
And when it came to our attention, I know that it doesn't necessarily add funds to the municipal coffers, per se, but it does make life better for residents, it gives people an incentive to shop and spend local, and hopefully adds an extra perk to those businesses that do open shop here, because, you know, any, any small savings that'll help give people a reason to shop here versus somewhere else, you know, we'll, we'll take it.
My only concern would be that if they got something like this passed, they would say, "We just did something for all of you."
We just helped you.
"We just helped you," so we're, how many ordinances can you possibly ask for, you know, in terms of relief? Because we do need some relief from, you know, from some of the burdens of maintaining all the roads that we have to around reservoirs and, and the, and the loss of revenue, so, so the only thing that I would suggest is that this is a good thing for our, for maybe our business community to reduce sales tax, but it may not necessarily help the tax burden of the, of the taxpayers of Ringwood, that's all.
I think it explicitly does not.
Yeah.
It's not gonna help that.
Excuse me, is that, is that like an enterprise zone?
Similar, yes, similar, not exactly, it's, it's similar to it, yes.
The only thing that I would be concerned about would be traffic, is other businesses opening for adjusted purpose of 3.5% sales tax. Just a consideration.
So Mayor, that's the, that's up to the council.
Does anybody want to make a, make a motion in support of this Senate Bill 888?
I'll make a motion, and I certainly hear, hear the concern, and hopefully it would give the, the traffic that's already heading through town a reason to stop and maybe help fill some of the vacancies that we see in, in the storefronts that we've got. So I would, I would move it.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Last shout out, oh, sorry. Last shout out to Kelly, because she had shared it from Wes Milford.
Yes.
And I think then Kathy and I crossed emails, saying yay.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
2018-134, this is a chapter 159 to bring in the Clean Communities money, $29,766.81, as an, as a item of revenue, we have to wait until after such time as we get the certification for those, so be it further resolved that the sum of, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but $29,766.81 being is hereby appropriated under the caps of, as listed, be it further resolved that the municipal clerk forward one copy of this to the director of local finance for its approval. Every year we do this, because the, the certification of funds comes in after our budget is adopted.
And this is about what we hadn't anticipated getting?
Close.
Was it a little bit more last year, like 32?
Yeah, it was, it was more last year, but we...
Why was it reduced, you know? I thought it was based on the amount of roadways that we have.
No, it's based on...
It's just tonnage, I think.
There's tonnages and so forth that, that go into this.
And then there's a pool every year that the state dedicates to it, and I don't know what the size of the pool is, and we get a relative share of that pool, so, I don't know, I don't know how that works, and the state budget still isn't...
Isn't adopted.
Isn't quite adopted yet, but they at least have this piece in, in play.
And how do we use this, again, this is litter abatement, right?
Yeah, we use this for, for litter abatement, recycling capacity, capacities in one form or another, education, you know, different, different, all different aspects, Clean Communities, goes to stormwater and stuff, does, uses it sometimes, so, there's a lot of different uses for this that are, that are very detailed and specifically outlined in the authority for us to use this money, so, it's, you can't just use it for whatever you want, it's very specifically geared towards litter abatement.
We have a motion on accepting $29,000 from the state.
I'll take it.
Thank you.
We've already accepted that this is the authority to put it into the budget.
Put it into the budget.
As a, as a revenue to offset our expenditures.
Check floating around, we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Ready to call?
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Mayor, 2018-135 is the resolution supporting the mayor's wellness campaign, do you want me to read it, or do you want to read it into the record?
I'll read it into record, Mr. Heck. Whereas across New Jersey, communities are facing rising healthcare costs, and whereas physical activity levels are decreasing, and whereas local leaders are looking for ways to promote active living, healthy eating, and overall wellness in their communities, and whereas the mayor's wellness campaign works with mayors and key leaders to shape healthier lifestyles for men, women, and children in their communities, and whereas the mayor's wellness campaign will work to implement a comprehensive program of outreach, education, and technical assistance activities to promote health and wellness for Ringwood. Now therefore, be it resolved that the council of the borough of Ringwood, New Jersey, requests all residents of our community to join us in supporting the mayor's wellness campaign, and be it further resolved that the council encourages the residents of, of the borough of Ringwood to participate in the mayor's wellness campaign activities to promote healthy living and improve the overall health of our community. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
I do want to thank Jamie Landis for submitting this and for putting it together, so that we can vote on it this evening.
And for staying around until we got there.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is our consent agenda resolutions. Whereas the mayor and council of the borough of Ringwood has reviewed the consent agenda consisting of the, of various proposed resolutions, now therefore be it resolved that the following resolutions on the consent agenda are hereby approved. 2018-137, approval of consent agenda. 2018-138, approval of payroll and payroll transfers, month of April. 2018-139, approval of payroll and payroll transfers, month of May. 2018-140, authorized redemption tax sale certificates, various. 2018-141, approval of chapter 159 Sustainable Jersey PSENG grant in the amount of $2,000. 2018-142, refund application fee, Board of Adjustment, Block 751.01, Lot 11.01, in the amount of $250. Resolution 2018-143, professional services payment for construction inspection and supervision, Cupsaw Drive Improvement Project, phases six and seven, contract number 2017-21, in the amount of $8,400. And 2018-144, appointment of members to Ringwood Sustainable Jersey Green Team.
Which are Annalisa Carreras?
Yes.
Jamie Landis and Polo Tedesco.
Polo Tedesco. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda? I got confused, what'd you get?
I got new.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
You don't always pause. Kelly just knew their voices, you gotta learn.
And we, we used to have a couple early triggers that we always knew were the first, you know, we were making the motion. Take a roll call, please.
Council members Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Thank you all. And just to clarify, because I know that there were many bills for Cupsaw Drive, that was the last one, and that was just the engineering part of it, not the actual construction.
The la, yeah, that was just a cleanup of, of...
Next on the agenda will be our manager's report.
You might find this hard to believe, but I have a very brief report tonight.
Good.
But we do have a couple things that we have to talk about this evening. I do have a couple things, one thing for executive session, Mr. Klimak, can we just talk about the GRC update for Toll versus the borough of Ringwood?
Okay.
If I have to do anything I need to know, so, give an update on that. We're also going to list the quarry in executive session. Okay. I'm gonna go first into the, the garbage specs. We went out to bid for, for the expanded garbage as per the, the finance committee's recommendation. One of the things that they tried to include was every other week, every other week recycling pickup, in the summer, every other week, twice a week garbage pickup, obviously the vegetation and the recycling. We found that when the bids came in, we only had one bidder, although we had other people pick up the bids, and, and if we kept it all the same way as it was, the increase to the solid waste yearly was about $62,000, the increase to the recycling was $165,570, the increase to the garbage, the garden debris was $11,631, so the increase is over what we have currently in our contract, which would start the end of December of this year, is $239,875, $875. I, I really think that, that's a, that's a huge increase to, to absorb. Part of the problem with recycling is, we have the same problem at our recycling center, the market's saturated, you're having to pay to get rid of things, you're not getting the dollars that you used to get, everybody recycling, but there's an, there's an incentive to recycle, like, if, if we didn't have the recycling pickup, all that would go into the garbage, and A, our landfills would be filling up, and B, we'd be paying garbage tonnage for it all, so, while it, it is a significant increase, and we have enjoyed making profits at some, some of these things, we are no longer doing that, and neither is garbage companies, and that's why the costs are going up significantly. If you break this down, the, the, the current contract for solid waste for three-year period is $2,288,265, it's going to $2,476,63, so, my recommendation is, we, we have a couple problems. We always go out to bid early, because if we have to rebid, we have time to do that, because there's, you might not know this, but the garbage industry in New Jersey, I'm not sure why, is probably the most regulated industry that there is, because of obvious reasons.
Historical.
Yes. So, having said all of that, so there's, there's very stringent rules as to what we can and can't do in the borough of Ringwood, so, if in fact we're gonna go out to bid again, we need to reject these bids tonight, so that we can go out to bid in July, receive them in, in, in August, review them for September, and, and adopt them. So, I don't recommend we do that, we got one bidder, I don't think going out to bid, we're gonna get any other bidders, and I don't think that we're gonna get any more competitive bids based upon what we see here. We went through all the other options, all of you had it in your packet, did you guys go through all the expenditures? I, I really think that we have to look very closely, we obviously can't get rid of recycling, we can't get rid of garbage pickup, we can't go to every other week garbage pickup in the summer, that was a very costly item, that was like $300,000, I believe.
You mean twice a week?
Twice, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, twice a week.
Could save a lot going every other week.
You could save a lot doing it that way, but that might...
Wouldn't have many happy residents.
That would require, it would be very smelly.
Their pairs would be happy, yeah.
Bears would be happy, yeah.
So I don't think that that's an option, so I think I would go with the every other week recycling. It adds two pickups, it was a zero percent, zero increase to the budget, so I think we should do that. Isn't that bad?
So moved.
Oh, it's so good. I mean, it's horrible news that they're increasing this, but the idea that it's the same price to go every other week kinda makes me wanna smile.
I have a feeling they added it in somehow, but, you know, they, so you're getting two more pickups a year. Obviously, I would go with the three-year contract for the solid waste, and I would go with the three-year contract for the recycling. The concern that I have is about the garden debris, and I've done some assessments for that. And I looked at different options, can we go out to bid, can we take recycling out, can we take commercial and industrial out, does that make sense? I talked to the garbage companies, we're not gonna save anything, the tonnage is gonna be exactly the same, I mean, the labor's gonna be exactly the same, the only thing that we're gonna save is a little bit of tonnage. There's 84 line items of commercial, there's 4,338 of residential. We have four volunteer organizations that we pick up for free, we have eight municipal buildings we pick up, including in our contract, we have seven churches that we pick up contained within, that they're not charged for, we have six schools, we have White Ecology Center, and we have some beaches. All that's contained in the recycling, in the garbage contract. When you go to the actual users of the curbside pickup for leaves, it's sporadic, it's really, the lake communities probably use it more than others, but when you look at the total garbage line item of 4,422, we have an, we've calculated, we think about 12.5% of the people actually use that service, which calculates out to be 552 locations. Right now, if you divide the cost for the curbside pickup, which is two months in the spring and two months in the fall, of $62,892, $891, excuse me, by the 422, it's $7.04, $7.40 per property address, right? But we know that only 12% of the people use it. If you divide it by the number of people who are actually using it, it actually costs the users for it, $113.78. So what I'm telling you is, by and large, the community is subsidizing the cost for the people who need to have their leaves picked up at the curb. So, and it's significant, it's a $62,000 cost. I looked at whether the DBW could pick up those to try and save money, but we would have labor. We don't have a garbage truck, so we would have to have an additional man with a loader to get it into the back of the roll-off, the fuel back and forth, it was an insignificant amount of savings. So you have, my recommendation tonight is one of two options for all of you to decide. Either keep exactly what we have, with the exception of the two every other week recycling, have the curbside leaf pickup twice in the spring and then the fall, and find a way to fund the $240,000. Or the other option is to remove the vegetative waste and save the $62,000 and have the residents find another way to do that, to get it to the recycling center. A lot of people do take it to the recycling center. Those are the only two options that I really think are viable out of these contracts. I don't think throwing the bids out is a good idea. I think your prices may very well go up. So I don't know what the committee has decided, whether they reviewed this at all, and so I...
No, we haven't had any discussion on it.
Are we legally allowed to follow up with the people who picked up bids and chose not? Are we legally allowed to follow up with the people who picked up bids but did not submit to inquire as to why?
Mr. Klimak?
Yeah, you could.
I could call. I think I could call, but the problem is I need a resolution this evening if in fact we're going to throw the bids out. Otherwise, we would have to have another special meeting to do that.
Do we have to throw the bid out in order to call?
No, but you have to, you have to have a...
Yes, I would have, you have to have finale or one or the other before you contact people who picked up things. In other words, it should be clean, and then if you wanna do it, do it.
Right. The apparent low bidder here, Dixie, is the apparent low bidder.
Right.
And he's our existing contractor.
So again, what was that, we're gonna drop garden waste pickup in its entirety?
That's one of my recommendations. Either we have to fine $240,000 next year, and that's not gonna affect us really this year except for one month. Next year it will have, it's gonna be a huge impact to the budget. I mean, that's double of what we cut out of the budget this year.
I do have a concern about dropping it. You said the majority of the people that use it are the lake communities?
I'm guessing, because they don't have places to blow it or...
Right, and having that debris get into the lake could cause a lot of problems if they're trying to get rid of it on their own, and instead of getting it down to the borough, they put it, blow it towards the lake, it could cause a lot of heartache for the lake communities to have more leaves or vegetation being put, like...
Yeah, I'm hopeful that people wouldn't do that, some people may very well, but it may increase some of the private contractors, it may increase, there may be a service that'll come up and start picking up the bags, or maybe other alternatives to the borough, to the residents as well. I just don't think we should be in the business of picking up the leaves ourselves because we're not equipped for that, which just doesn't, I'm not sure that that makes sense. I looked at it as an option, it just, so the two options are leave it the way it is or remove that. I certainly would not recommend you remove the recycling at all, which is one of the things that...
What's the main cost driver in the increase, is the recycling?
Recycling is the cost.
Recycling.
And the fact that there's no change in picking up every other week or picking up twice a month tells you that it's actually getting rid of the stuff is really what's driving it here. You know, the additional manpower and routes, those two additional pickups per year don't quite matter much in their whole equation.
Yeah, the world market is just depressed with recycling.
It's saturated.
Saturated, yeah.
But it's still better than going in landfills and paying tipping fees on landfill costs.
I don't know, recycling goes up 90%, and solid waste goes up 8. Landfill seems to be magical sometimes.
I don't know.
The more you stick in them, the more you have, the more space you have.
I'm afraid some of the recycling is actually going there. Steve Wyden, I mean, not locally, obviously, but I have a feeling that that's what's happening. A lot of it, when some of the recycling products are contaminated, that's exactly what they're doing. They're taking it and they're saying, okay, this is contaminated with whatever.
A lot of jurisdictions are doing that.
They're just saying, okay, well, you can't mix this type of bag and this type of bag and this and this and this and this, so therefore all this goes, and that's what's happening in a lot of these cases.
Yeah, Rockland County's merciless.
Yeah.
Do we know how that applies to, do we know how that applies to us since we co-mingle? Like in terms of what we can and can't include?
We don't.
No, our conferences are clear, once we stick the can out into the street, right? We're all good, we've done our good deed for the day, we don't know what happens on the other end.
Actually, in the last contract, when we went, we compared single stream versus separation, the single stream was actually cheaper.
Yes.
Because the technology to separate it is there.
Nice.
Keep in mind that we encourage, I encourage all of our residents to put our recycling materials at the curb for cans and bottles and plastics and stuff, because the garbage company, it's all included, when you bring it to the recycling center, A, we have to separate it because we separate at the recycling center, and B, we have to pay to get rid of that. So put the plastics into the recycling that goes to your curb, because it's contained in this contract anyway, bring the aluminum cans and stuff to us, bring the metals to us, bring the corrugated to us.
Stuff that has market value.
Stuff that has at least, you know, cost neutral.
Do you want it wet? The box is down first for her?
It's not true that we take the paper and cardboard on rainy days. So Mayor, that's something that you folks really have to decide, and the decision really is, when you look at the numbers, the decision is really two clear options, either do it the way we're doing it, or do it minus vegetative waste. Really, there is no other option. And, you know, so it's really your pleasure, but I really would like us to...
So what we're looking at here is that option 6.8.1 and 6.8.3, which is that third set.
The third set in the spreadsheet that I sent you where it says exactly that.
Okay, and this is also, you helpfully dropped out the garden pickup there.
Well, that's the garden, that's the garden, yeah.
So it'll still be a $176,000, $177,000 annual increase.
That's without the garden, that's as-is. So it's either one or three in this program.
Yes, very good. Yep.
Or throw it all out and go out to bid.
Generally doesn't get you anything, at least in the construction world, that does not get you anything, unless you change the scope, unless you change what we're asking for. And we're only asking for what we got, you know, we're not looking to expand it, you know, it did take a little bit of experiment to see what happens for twice-a-week pickups in the summertime, you know, some discussion on that, but that just, in light of the prices we got back, that does seem to be...
But it does make sense.
No.
The problem with the, I'm sorry. The problem with the twice-week pickup is they have three-month employees, what do they do with the employees the rest of the year? That's really what it boiled down to, how do they handle that? They're temporary employees, so...
I know from a numbers standpoint, it seems relatively easy and straightforward. It's caught in my brain to cut a service of any kind when people pay the taxes that they do. That's hard. I wonder, and it probably would not meaningfully change the numbers, to change the time period during which we would do the garden pickup, one month at the spring and one month in the fall, but maybe it would, I don't know, cause them to not, not come back to bid with us and give us some time to hear from the public in terms of its value.
I don't think you're gonna get any savings by compressing it into one month of the year. You will get a lot of phone calls. Yeah, so, we supplement this program as it is because they miss things, we go back, we pick things up, we supplement it. So if you're not going to reject the bids, I don't need a decision tonight, but the problem is if you next meeting say to me, we know we've decided to reject the bids, we've missed our window to rebid, so...
Well hypothetically, we don't anticipate any benefit to rebid, right? We wouldn't see anybody coming in that didn't already submit. The current contractor is probably not gonna change the picture significantly in our favor, at least. So if we have time to not accept and can at least let this stew, for lack of a better term, with ourselves and with the community and take it up, next meeting.
We're committed to, we're committed to going forward. If we wanna, if we, if we're thinking of rejecting, we have to do so tonight, or else we're not gonna have time to rebid.
And I'm, what I'm gathering is that there's not any real benefit to rejecting, it's just a matter of which option we choose from this set of bids, bid.
It really boils down to garden debris or no.
Right.
Yeah, basically.
So, my opinion is that we should keep the garden debris. I know I have certain neighbors who use it all the time, others like myself, I don't find myself ever using it, but I keep thinking of them over and over, and they would, they would miss it. It's a good point about the lakes, I can imagine being tempted to just blow it towards the lake if you didn't have the pickup. I cringe at that thought, I don't know. I vote towards keeping the service, and, I don't know, hopefully there's a better option next year, it's horrible that the numbers go up like this, 240,000.
And if more people utilized it, would the price...
We're looking for three years.
For your contract.
Right, okay, next time around, right?
But the cost is the same, no matter, like you said, we have 12% of the people that are utilizing it today.
That's an estimate, that's only, there's no real...
So maybe it's just that a lot of people aren't aware of the fact that they have this wonderful service to take advantage of. I know, I don't think my husband is utilizing it, and...
Well, what I wasn't aware of for a period of time, just gonna make the point, I mean, use it, guys, hey, listen, all you need is cans, you don't have to have those paper bags and fill them up, like I find that annoying, but you could have big garden, or big contractor pails, right, that you could fill up the...
I don't think that's true.
Oh, I was under the impression you could use pails, I have a neighbor that does, and they take it.
I'll have to look at the specs, but I think you have to be in bags.
Oh, okay. Pardon me then, so...
And I think this has been a program that we've had for many, many years, and the people who use it, use it, and it's really, not necessarily all the lakefront properties, but some of the, some of the properties in Erskine and Skyline and Cupso don't have woods to blow it into, they, you know, so they pick it up or they clean it, or they have landscapers come, whatever the case may be, so...
That could be a shame to lose a service over seven bucks a household, it's like, some people actually use it, right? That's what it breaks down to, $7.04 per household.
It breaks down to $7.40 a household if you amortize it over the entire tax base as opposed to the people who actually use the service.
Right.
If you break it down to the people who use the service, if you charge just them, it'd be $113, $114 approximately. So what we're saying is, three-quarters of the people are subsidizing the one-quarter of people, or even less, so...
And the annual increase is a $60, about a $60 increase to the average taxpayer. Just going into next year.
Yeah, that 240.
Going into, that 240 is about $60 to the average house, that's our increase going in next year. We still got the North Jersey District Water Supply Commission Tax Appeal that we're paying down for another, you know, I don't know what that is, 715, somewhere in that vicinity. So we're going in, we're going into another bad year.
Do we get money back from the schools for picking up their garbage? After that?
Yeah, it's the same pocket.
I don't know the answer, but I'm gonna ask it.
No, you know what, there's a lot of things that we do for the schools that we could charge, whether they use our fuel tanks, whether we salt their parking lots, whether, we could charge it back to their budgets, but what are we really doing, you know? If, whether it's the school using it or us using it, what's, it's really our people regardless, so I don't often do that.
The industrial park, though, maybe they could pay us for garbage pickup, that's something we've discussed.
They could, but...
It's almost a trivial number of users, and those people are already paying pretty good tax bills and sending no kids into school. I mean, those are net, you know, net winners from a municipal perspective, as far as, as far as, you know, is it, you know, a negative or a positive ratable? You know, then to take that away from them, that's, you know, it doesn't make us very attractive to business.
It's 84 in total for all the shopping centers and any commercial industrial versus the 4,300 homes, and I would venture to say, based upon my conversation prior to us going in bids, because I looked at that, it's not gonna change your numbers at all. It's gonna be insignificant, you're not even gonna notice it in the...
I think if we wanna move on it tonight, I would prefer to keep the garden debris in, as not, not an overly significant dollar amount per household, and a service that's there for people who, I don't know, they're already paying $20,000 a year, the extra $7 to actually get their leaves taken up versus $20,000 a year and no leaves, it's a harder message for me to deliver personally. But I also didn't know that we had to, I missed that, I didn't realize that we had to reject or move on it tonight, so not looking to rebid or reject, but if we wanted to table it, I'm also fine taking it up in July.
If we were to reject the bids, we have to do it tonight, we'll revise the specs, we'll start day advertising, we'll contact the newspaper in July, we'll advertise the first week of July, we'll open the bids the first week, the second week of September, we'll award the contract to the end of September.
I don't wanna reject, I don't wanna reject, I just wanted to table choosing.
That's the schedule, if in fact we move forward.
Oh yeah, I'm not, I'm not thinking of rejecting.
And then we are stuck with whatever shows up in September, then we're then...
Definitely, definitely not rejecting, but if we wanted to table choosing the option from this bid until the next meeting.
The difference is, you know, is it $45 a house or so for that, you know, $176,000 increase, you know, taking out the garden work, or $60 increase per household. That's what we're looking at.
I thought it was $7. I think I'm writing down all my numbers.
The $7 is if, if you looked at, if you took it across, what was that number?
The $7 is just, if you, if you take the 4,400 pickups that we have in the garbage contract, and you divide the 62,000 and spread it over everybody in town, not just the people who are using it, $7 per line item.
Right, so it's $7 for the service, whether you use it or not.
Per user.
Per user, yeah, not per user, per, for the whole town, like we have 4,400 pickups, so you divide that by 62,000, you come up with $7.40.
Per potential user.
Right, maybe...
Potential user.
Right.
We're also charging them for recycling even if they never put it out.
There you go. Okay, so...
We have three that would like to have it remain in there.
Well, I think, I think what I'm hearing from Mr. Bolton is, you're thinking that we're not gonna, not reject the bids, which I agree with, but as far as what decision to make?
I think we should leave it in, yeah.
I have a hard time doing an increase and then also taking services away, so I'm gonna be the bad guy and make the motion that we go with the top option here of 8.1, 8.3, 8.5, keep the garden in.
For a total increase of 200, a total contract of $3,715,061, or an increase of $239,875, $875 a year.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, hold up, hold up, hold up. Are you caught up with us? There should be a resolution behind it, right?
There's not, but it's okay, I got it, somebody got it. Motion.
Roll call.
Yeah.
Roll, roll, roll.
Okay, councilmembers Bolton?
Nope. Nope. They have discussion.
Nope. Okay, so we have a motion second on the table. Yeah. We have a motion second on the table for accepting options 8.1, 8.3, and 8.5.
And I was right with you with the yes, I was ready to...
Yes.
I know I'm crazy.
I was just asking if she had the list, that's all I was asking, that's the mayor's job.
Any further discussion on that?
Well, just for the record, let's say it's awarded to, okay, Interstate Waste Services, 300 Frankford Boulevard Suite, 39 Teaneck, New Jersey. All documents are in order, statement of ownership, non collusion affidavit, affirmative action, bid bond, okay? This is also subject to appropriate performance bond and final legal review of any award.
And subject to availability of funds.
Always, yes.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of it. It's, this almost, this is almost like another employee, you know, the difference here, the garden option is, what's that adding, $188,000 over the course of, you know, over the course of three years, or 62, you know, $63,000 a year. We gotta find a way to pay for that somehow, and not put that on the taxpayers' back. Again, got no guarantees that next budget year is not gonna look like this budget year, which was pretty dismal, and I don't need a repeat of it, and I have a repeat of it just staring at me right now, and I'm not really interested in, in that kind of a tax increase all, you know, all across the board. So I'm probably gonna be, you know, voting against that motion, Mr. Noonan. Is there any other, any other discussion on it?
I definitely see that point, and I know that it is, I know that it's bleak, and I don't pretend that it's not. Hypothetically, the, I don't even know what to call them, the vacuum trucks that, like contractors drive around, suck the leaves up, any idea what those go for?
I might have an idea what those go for. In this environment, not having curbs, not having, you know, not having, it's not, it's not something that would work.
It's labor intensive.
Very. Very intensive.
Potential damage to machines like that, and the huge volume we do.
Because now you will get the people who could blow into the woods, but it's easier to put it at the curb because the burrow's coming to get it. So I would not encourage that, you know, that's, that's not, that's not a viable option. Good thought, though.
Totally get that, and just heard from a lot of new residents from towns that are used to that, that were baffled, and having to have the conversation that those leaves are going to stay there until you put them in bags, or pay somebody to come and get them.
Burton County.
Yeah. I didn't wanna name names, but yeah. Yeah. So I, and in that context of the service, I think the, as tough as the bullet is to bite, I'd rather have them bite the bullet and have the service.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we'll, we'll take a roll call on options six point eight point one, six point eight point three, and six point eight point five. And this is for contract two thousand eighteen dash one hundred.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Horetti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
No.
Okay. Couple of things really quick. These are really follow-up questions, and I had a couple of follow-up questions from last meeting, also, Mayor, that we talked about responding. The first one we have was Reservoir. I think even somebody this evening talked about it. I met with the reservoir about various things. One of the things I talked to him about is, you know, we're doing a great job of cleaning up our community, we're doing a great job of cleaning up intersections, cleaning up the side of the roads, doing what we have to do. We, we do litter abatement ourselves, and we, we've done it twice last year, so it's not every three years. And that, and that group that goes out there, the Doug Group, they're out there, they're out there all the time.
They were there a while ago.
The problem is, as soon as we, as soon as we clean it up, the next day, you can see, you can see garbage. You know, I do everything I can. When I see a bag on the side of the road that has garbage in it, I try to find an address so we can send them a bill, because we increased all of our littering fees. We've done all that kind of stuff. So I've talked to the reservoir about the appearance. I said, you know, the fences, when I was a kid growing up, the fences were all painted with rollers, and they were neat, and they were clean, and they, you know, when they, when something went down, they were, they were fixed. When there was an accident, the next day, there was fences going up, and so what, what we've worked out is they, after the tour, agree that their properties do not look very appealing, and their fences do not look very aesthetically pleasing to our beautiful community, that we, that we protect all of their land, that they really need to step up and help us out a little bit, and they have agreed to do that. I have my supervisors going around getting GPS locations for the worst, the worst sites, where there's areas where we can remove the fence, where they don't need the fence. There's areas where they have those ballards that were for protection, but they're really hazards. So we're in the process of doing that. For the folks in Stonetown, you'll notice that the two thousand, you know, the September eleven, two thousand and eleven, excuse me, the September, the concrete barricades, I had them removed, because I said, why are they there? They were there so that, you know, after nine eleven, no one could launch a missile from that particular site at the tank. Well, it hasn't happened in all these years, and quite frankly, they're not gonna stop and pull off the side of the road to do that. So they very kindly took those things out, because they, it was a reaction back then to, to a security issue that they perceived was going on. So that's cleaned up. So we're working with the reservoir on some of those things, because, you know, we're doing a great job of cleaning up our community, and we want them to do their share as well. So, and they're willing to do it, so. So that kinda answers that question. There was a question last month, last meeting about when the quarry went below three seventy, and that happened in two thousand and six, and that's in the council minutes. There was a question about a firm that we hired, and, because of a complaint, and there was a complaint that centered around, by an individual, that centered around individuals that, that I couldn't do the investigation. It was somebody that would be above me and that I report to. So, so we hired somebody to do an independent investigation, and that's what you would do in these particular situations. So that's not something out of the ordinary. That's, that's what you do there. And the last question, I think that was all the questions that I had at the last meeting, Mayor, that I needed to answer.
Very good.
I think that's it. I don't have the normal manager's report that I usually have, because I've been a little busy down on the first floor in the clerk's office. I wanna thank Nicole. You guys don't know Nicole. Nicole actually is in our finance office, and she's been helping me out both here tonight, and she's doing a great job in the clerk's office, trying to help me to, it's a lot to absorb and learn. And as you can imagine, as you're learning a job like that, it takes you so much more to do it, and you second guess yourself, and we bounce a lot of things over, and I just wanna thank you for all your extra effort. She was here election night, she was here the other day waiting to get your packets out. The reason I was harassing you is because she was harassing me, and it's great to have somebody that pushes me to get that stuff done. So I just want, I wanna thank you for that, and just know that we are doing everything we can to streamline. We do miss Kelly. Kelly did a great service for this community. She, she worked hard, and she did a lot of work in that office, and it was relatively seamless with, when Kelly was here. We still call her when we have questions, and she helps us out, and she's happy where she is. And so we're gonna, we're gonna have a recommendation, probably at the next meeting, for what path we believe that you folks should go with that particular position. The only other thing that I'll talk about briefly is, we had talked about an incentive program for, for people that were close to the edge of retiring, to, you know, to help them and aid them in their retirement, so that we could realize some benefits, mainly for next year, but could realize some benefits in this year, and that program has been relatively successful. There are quite a few people have taken advantage of it, so while we will miss these individuals, we're gonna try not to replace them. And we're gonna try to, to absorb some of those jobs, because we know, and I talked about it at length at the budget committee meetings, that we need to do multi-year budgets, and we, and we know what next year's gonna bring already. So what I'm trying to do now, and Debbie Buchanan, our CFO, is working very hard with me, to do what we can now to start savings, because if you wait until January to start to save, and whether it's an employee or anything else, you know, by the time you go through a process of reduction of staff, it takes months and months and months, and you don't realize that savings. These few people that have chosen to retire because they're at the, they're looking to do that anyway, we now will have that savings immediate. So that's gonna help this. It's not gonna solve the problem for the, like, the two hundred and forty thousand dollars that we just approved this evening, but it's gonna go a long ways towards helping put a dent in that problem. That with some, some good financial controls and management is, is gonna aid that process, so... So, Mayor, if I don't, if you don't have any questions?
I do have one question, if you could. We had talked a lot about how recycling is going down, and it's oversaturated, and it's not really giving us a good return. As far as the super fund site with the building of a five point four million dollar recycling center, as you know, I would prefer that we do a clean out rather than a cap. However, if we are ending up going forward with a cap, I would like to have us get a estimate from KDC Solar. I think I sent you this information, because that would save us the cost of building a recycling center. We could, as a community, purchase power at a lower cost, and actually realize a profit from a lease agreement with the solar company, as opposed to investing a lot of money in a recycling center and having to pay to maintain it.
We're paying to maintain our recycling center currently, and Ford Motor Company is, is going to construct and pay for the construction of our recycling center.
Well, the solar would give us money towards our budget and could bring our costs down. The recycling center isn't gonna realize a profit. So it's not something to vote on to do tonight. It's just getting KDC Solar in to give us an estimate, to see what kind of profit from a lease agreement we could realize, and also how we might be able to lower the cost of power for our municipal buildings, our schools, and also for our community.
And I think they had done, other brownfield sites, like, it's not just some random company.
Yeah, this is in line with the New Jersey Energy Master Plan for installation of solar panels on brownfields. It's something that is sustainable, something to move us forward. And, you know, again, this is just getting an estimate to see what we can do to offset costs.
I spoke with a couple of power companies, and I reached out to them, they have not gotten back to me. But the problem is, there's no available receiver of the grid in that particular section. And because the area for the recycling center is so small, it's not a big enough area to be something that's viable for this type of program, that's gonna be sustainable for the expense that would be put into it. The other problem that we have is that in order to get that level area to put the new recycling center on, we have to abandon the old one and turn it into wetlands mitigation and green space, and that's a requirement of the, of the New Jersey DEP, as well as the EPA. So if in fact we were to decommission our old recycling center and put a solar farm on the new...
To keep that one, right?
No, you can't. The part of making the recycling center the cap, the DEP has required that the old recycling center become a green space and wetlands mitigation and whatnot, so that's all going to be reforested. So if in fact you were to change your use from a recycling center to a solar farm, if you did have an end user that you could use that for, we would now no longer have a recycling center, so we would need to find another suitable site for that recycling center. So...
What about the landfill?
I don't, I would have to...
Yeah, why don't you think about that?
Behind Borough Hall.
Yeah, behind the DPW, yeah.
I don't know that it's, it's big enough.
Yeah, don't know if it's, it isn't, it isn't very big.
Yeah, and, and the other concern that the, everybody that I spoke to was it, the, the actual flat surface for the recycling center, first of all, faces the wrong way. Second of all, if in fact we were to do that, it's too small to yield enough for the capital investment into it, so...
Well, if you contact them, they would tell you that that was their finding. I mean, I had talked to KDC, I think last year, when I was...
Yeah, I call them. They just haven't called me back yet, but I'll call them again.
And they were willing to come up and take a look at the site and give us a report. That's all I'm requesting, is that we actually get them on site and see what they can propose or consider doing that might benefit the community.
I, I think the problem that I have is to have them go through that process, and I could just send them maps and they could do it from there. The problem is, what are we gonna do for a recycling center in the meantime? Like, what, now what do we do with the recycling center, because the one across the street's gone? So now all the product that we have going up there in our clean community monies, and all the stuff that we receive from all the recyclables that we do, if we're no longer gonna do that, we're only gonna put recycling at the curb, and we're not gonna take the leaves that we pick up and dump it at the recycling center, now what do we do? Like, because we, because they don't, the garbage people don't take the leaves or the brush that they pick up. They take it and they dump it at our recycling center.
We pay them all that money and they just dump it in our own spot?
Yes, yes. That's just transportation. That's all that is. So they don't take that to a landfill.
We can't do that much cheaper.
Fair enough.
So, so I guess the problem is, while that, the logistical problem is...
The solar farm in lieu of the new recycling center?
Right.
Okay. My big problem is, you don't need to cap the O'Connor disposal area if you wanna put in the solar farm. That, that's a big problem. That's, that's gonna cost the borough millions of dollars. We're not, we're not even getting... I mean, you have to cap O'Connor disposal area and try to save the borough taxpayer from having to pay to remove all that material.
The solar panels would be a cap, and they're considered unacceptable use for capping brownfields.
Uh, no, I've, I've actually done that in brownfields and landfills and such, and I put, and put these, these type of facilities on it, and a number of different kind of, kind of foundation configurations you can do. It's fine. But that would not, that would not drive EPA, you don't need direct road access necessarily from, from Peters Mine Road to a solar farm. You can get there in a more indirect fashion. You can, you can have a longer access road. The idea of the recycling center is that they're not gonna remove all that material in O'Connor disposal area, because we still need to access it from the level of Peters Mine Road. They're gonna, they, they, the proposal to take all that stuff out of the O'Connor disposal area is gonna, is gonna expose, you know, fifteen feet or more of, you know, of, of that area right next to the road. That's, so why would you, I don't, I don't think EPA would, would, would be, would be moving towards the cap. We need the cap, is what we need. We need the cap more than we need the recycling center.
We disagree on the, that, that we need the cap more than...
We need the cap desperately. It's, it's, it's absolutely critical. The, the quarter million dollars in, in, in a garbage contract pales in comparison to what, what would happen if you tried to change and, and, and do a removal over at O'Connor. Pales in comparison to what, it, it, it pales in comparison to your legal costs over the next, you know, over the next ten years. It's, it would be, it would be irresponsible to try to change that up at this point, and hope to make it up in, you know, in, in reduced electrical fees and some S-Rex or something.
Just to clarify, it's not instead of the cap, it's on top of the cap instead of the recycling center. So still do the cap, but then cover it with the solar farm.
Why would they agree with that?
EPA would agree with that.
Why?
Because it's in their New Jersey Energy Master Plan.
That's not the EPA.
Well, the EPA, we, I spoke to them at one of the CAG meetings, and they said that would be fine.
What would be fine? Did they tell you what would be fine?
A solar farm instead of a recycling center, yes. That's what we spoke about.
On a cap at O'Connor. Yeah, you gotta be very specific with these guys.
Well, we were at the CAG meeting when we discussed it.
One, which one was that?
Few months back.
Okay. I'm usually pretty good at making all those. Don't recall the conversation.
I spoke to them after the meeting, not during the meeting, so therefore you might have missed it.
Yeah, yes. Yeah.
And I'll also add, I think in terms of like, if I'm understanding all the moving pieces, from a cost standpoint, it might not make sense to pay for a solar farm, but if this is something that, instead of paying for the recycling center, Ford was paying for the solar farm, but then we were able to generate money off of it, that that would be almost like a small annuity to the borough. That's the concept. Whether or not, given the need to reclaim wetlands, that's actually viable in terms of all the moving parts, but at least that was, that was the idea, instead of...
Well, I think if you were to switch from, from anything, if you lose your recycling center because you're moving it across the street, and then you decide we're, we're gonna change it to this use, you just now need a recycling center.
I think the hypothetically was, don't touch the recycling center.
What's that?
Hypothetically, the idea was leave the old recycling center where it is, don't touch it.
Right, you can't do that. That's, right, that's not in the, in the rod. It's very, it's very specific. DEP made it require, a record of decision said, this is what it is. We require this. So that, I think that ship has sailed, so... And I don't know that I would, I don't have another suitable site easily that we could, we could do that with. And I think the bigger problem, I, I don't know that I, I'm opposed to, from my, my own opinion, to energy, solar farm. But I think based upon the information that I received from several different individuals, is that it's not large enough, it's not close enough to a real grid, and, and, which makes it, and it's not facing the right direction, which makes it cost prohibitive for these type of things. You would get so little yield. And it's the same argument that I had when I tried to put solar panels at the parking lot, because I was really trying hard to get solar panels at the parking lot, and I figured, you know what, hey, listen, it won't have to plow underneath it, will generate some energy, but there wasn't enough usage in there that we could, that we could use the actual energy to, to receive those, those credits. I'll reach out to him again and try and talk to him. I can send him a map, but I have a feeling he's gonna say the same thing that the other companies have.
I did send him a map when I spoke to him last year. I did a Google map and sent it over, and they seemed...
I think he needs the map of the actual final grade, so that he sees the...
Okay.
Because it does look like it's a big area.
You only got like a four and a half acre flat pad for that recycling center there, which would be suitable for a solar farm. Other than that, you own down on a three to one slope, and those, you can't do that with those things.
And I'm gonna tell you, I'd be very concerned. One of the reasons that they wanted to have something on top of the cap be protected is because of, of damage and vandalism and quad traffic and so forth. A manned facility was desirable, because there's somebody there every day watching the cap, paying attention to the recycling center, whereas a solar farm would not have that same scenario. There would not be, it would not be a manned facility. And those were some of the reasons that the EPA has selected what they've selected. But having said all that, I'll reach back out to him and see if we can get him to, you know, I'll show him the actual design.
He'll give us some other ideas. Will he have any, yeah, could he go find another site?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go back to that parking lot, get over there and start doing it there.
Yeah, that was how long ago that you did that.
I tried.
Well, solar panels have come down a lot, so maybe it's time to look at it again, but maybe with the energy on it... but maybe with the energy you want it to come out.
That wasn't the Passaic County program, was it? The Passaic County PCIA program?
It was one of the, we did two different options, was Passaic County was one and there was another one, yeah.
Yeah, that thing blew up.
Yeah, it did.
We did, we did sign up for the Passaic County.
Yes.
Passed resolutions, contracts, and it fell apart, yeah.
Not on our end, on the county end.
On the county end, right. On the, on the, on the S-Rex end, on the credits.
The S-Rex, yes.
Blew up. Okay, that was school manager's report, right?
That was mayor and council, I guess, yeah.
No.
I was done, I'm done.
Health officer?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. What did we have there? Oh, yeah, we, we have two more things. We need a resolution for...
We're going to do this in...
This is executive session.
We're going to go through executive session.
I need a resolution, Mayor, and I'm going to, I'm going to fly by to see my pants here for the Green Team. We need a resolution authorizing, this will be the next number, what was the last resolution number we had, Nicole?
So this would be 2018-146.
146. This is a resolution authorizing borough manager to, authorizing the acceptance of the Green Team's vision and plan for communication and publication for community involvement and usage of the grant as outlined in their presentation, subject to legal review of content. Anything I need to add there, Mr. Kleemack?
That's it.
Okay.
That covers us?
Legal review always covers you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't envision there is any, but it's just...
Okay, do we have a motion on Resolution 2018-146, authorizing manager to accept the Green Team's recommendations, some of, with regard to the use of that PSENG grant?
Still moved.
Mr. Bolton, Mr. Ferretti, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
And Health?
Health officer.
Yeah, Health officer.
This is important.
We, I sent you all a contract, although you got, you got two different contracts. One was the red line version Helen sent you originally. Why it showed up in her computer that way and mine didn't show up that way, I don't know.
I'm going to want...
But this is essentially, no, I saw it when I opened up, I opened up yours to print it out for me tonight, I said, why do they have this? But essentially, our health officer retired, and I have been searching for some viable options for a shared service for a course of a year. I'm recommending that we enter into an agreement with, with Lincoln Park. They have a, they have a very progressive health officer slash nurse who is willing to help us out and be our health officer and help cover our shared service that we have with Wannacue, even though most of the shared service is with our REHS, contained with our existing health officer, our existing health department. So I'm recommending that we enter into disagreement. We do need to make a couple of minor changes, Mr. Kleemack?
Yes.
To the contract, we want to make sure that, that Wannacue is mentioned in it, we want to just tweak a couple of things, but I would like to get this contract in order. As you know, we've been trying to get the health department revitalized for several months, and I think this will be the shot in the arm that they so desperately need. So I'm recommending this contract for the course of a year, see how it goes, and then we can revise it after we've had the year's experience. She's a wealth of knowledge, very well respected in the, in the circle, both in the public nurse circle as well as the health officer circle, so...
Are we able to accept it pending the addition of Wannacue?
I think maybe, subject to legal review and...
That'll be one of the, one of the things to be worked out, but the, the general substance as to the duties of the health officer, et cetera, et cetera, are set forth there.
Don't spell that.
Yes, we just have to, just, just make sure, I mean, it is verbally understood that their duties will cover Wannacue, but we're going to have to make sure that's not a written agreement, okay?
So you're really giving me authorization with Mr. Kleemack to edit the contract, then enter in into a contract with the township of Lincoln Park?
And that would be Resolution 2018-147?
It's already outlined in your...
Oh, do you have a resolution?
Yeah, I do. That'll be Resolution...
136, correct, 2018-136.
Correct.
136?
136.
Oh, okay.
Any discussion on the shared surface for a health officer from the borough of Lincoln Park?
Lovely town, lovely idea.
Yeah.
Good. If so, can I have a motion on Resolution 2018-137? Can we read that into the record first?
Yeah.
Is it here?
Set forth, set forth on the record, 2018-2018-136. Okay, a motion?
Got it.
Mr. Noonan, second?
Second.
Mr. Davison, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Okay. I think you're done.
Mayor, I know this wasn't as smooth as normal, but Kelly was a seasoned veteran.
That's quite understandable. Mr. Kleemack?
Attorney's report?
Yes, I have various executive session matters. I'll recite a resolution. I resolve that municipal council enter executive session to discuss the following matters. One would be Scott Yonatoli versus Ringwood before the general, before the GLC. Secondly, potential litigation over our peddler's ordinance. Third, potential litigation Saddle Mountain LP. Be it further resolved that minutes of the meeting be maintained and be available for public inspections provided by law. The public is advised that the municipal council may take formal action on any matter discussed in the executive session when returns open session, or may take formal action on any other matter.
Do we have a motion for Resolution 145?
Moved.
Bolton?
Okay.
Mr. Noonan, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is our second general public comment portion. Anybody wishing to address the mayor and council, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Try to keep your, keep your comments respectfully short at this late hour and non-repetitive.
Well, I'm sorry to come up here with shorts and look too casual.
It's summer.
My name is Ned Claus, and I live in 45 Walker Drive, right here in Ringwood. You've had a fascinating dialogue tonight, and I don't know, you probably wore out a lot of people, including yourselves, with all the exchanges that you had and all the information you provided, and it was quite daunting. I'm going to just touch on a couple of things if I may, not what you just discussed, but I want to add a couple of other questions that I have. One, a couple of people in my neighborhood have said to me, hey Ned, what do you think about when you, we come up, come out of Cupsoard Drive and you make a left on Ringwood Avenue? All that new pavement they put down on the curves, why the hell did they do that? Is that the cost of Ringwood, or is that the cost of the county? Because it's breaking up, and when I'm driving there now, I'm bouncing all over the place. Now, whose cost is that? Does that come on our town cost?
That's a county, that's a county...
Our town make that decision?
County project.
I'm sorry?
It's a county project.
Okay, that's all county, so it is not our burden, it's their burden to fix that.
It's just our pain.
It's, yeah, it's our burden to drive over it, to our tires up.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an absurd thing, they must have been experimenting with something there. Is there any way that you can go after the county and say, hey, we, we can't have this anymore? Because it's coming right through our...
We have sent several letters of safety concerns and...
Yeah.
Accidents and liability. We have really pressed them, and we just got another letter from our ambulance corps suggesting that this is really a disaster, it's hard for patients, it's, you know, we had an accident relative to avoiding something. So yes, we have done everything we can. The good, well, I don't think this is good news, but unfortunately, everywhere they did this, they're having trouble with it, and it's friction surface that they put on the pavement, thinking that it would help with gripping, and I guess it helps with gripping if you're not missing the potholes.
Well...
You've seen some good installations of that stuff, but it's generally on freshly paved roads. If you just put in, you know, mill it all out, put in an inch and a half of fine, arid asphalt, and then put that thin coat on, they have much better luck with it.
Well, it's not good now, and I hope that can be resolved because it's very...
I think they're working on a solution.
Very disturbing to so many people. Change of subject for a moment. I mean, there was so much discussion that, on finances and, you know, managing things and having more cost and not having enough income and so forth. It's, I know it's disturbing a number of people, certainly me, from looking at all of this and saying, hey, here's Wannacue, for instance, and I know this might be an unfair comparison, they're, they're building all kinds of things, they're getting tremendous income there in that little community, which is nowhere near, in my estimation, as nice and as wonderful as, as Ringwood is, yet we don't seem to be making any progress in that. And when you see, of course, and a number of people told me this too, and visitors, boy, you've got a lot of empty stores here, you know. There, I mean, there's something not seeming to connect where, where we have any growth out of this, and I don't know if it's because the state is restricting us of what we can do. I mean, now I just saw in Wannacue, this, this new immense apartment building now going up next to the shopping center, they're the little shopping center, and that's, they're, those shop people are booming from that, I know a few of them, in fact, one of them lives here in Ringwood. You know, it seems to me we're, we're almost stagnant, and when you're stagnant, you know, like in a business corporation, I was just talking with, at Hilton Meadowlands with Tyler Matheson and, from CNBC and others from CBS, and they were interviewing me, and, you know, how a company, it was a small business community, how companies come to a certain point and communities, and then they start to level off, and it starts to slip away because it needs to be revamped, revised, looked at in a new way. And I'm just hoping for something of that nature to develop here because you can't be, you know, you guys can't be just passive about it sitting here, and I, and that's not to knock you because you, what you have contributed to the community, you're working very hard, but there's still something kind of not happening. And I, I just want to throw that out, and, I mean, you should have been at this small business conference with CBS and CNBC, and they were interviewing me actually, too, but there was about 300 business people there, and it was all about the same thing, you know, how you can start to fade. You can't just stay there, you got to find a way up. That's it for me. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Oh.
Mr. Mayor?
You're going to wish you spoke earlier, Bolton.
I tried to wait a little bit, appropriate amount of time.
Bill Marsala, 14 Locust Lane. It's been a while. I've been trying to be like someone and, you know, that they doesn't want to get lost. But it's been a while, Mr. Heck, just DPW, great job this winter, that's how long I haven't been up here. It's, so I've been remiss in telling you that. The other thing is, the water test results, really positive, right?
Yes.
This week?
To be expected.
To be expected.
To be expected.
Everything that was settled along, correct?
Yes.
No detection, very minimal, so all that fear mongering was for naught, and basically just falsehoods. The other thing is, you know, I heard something before about adding additional expense to businesses up in the industrial park, laying this expense off on the industry. If you think you have empty stores now in the shopping center, you're going to have an empty industrial park if you keep going that way, because then Ringwood will, as the mayor said, will be very uninviting to businesses. A lot of businesses don't want to stay now because there's really no sustainability. No one actually stops here in Ringwood to spend their money, you know, to pass through. They might come up here, hike, spend time at the state park, but then, you know, they're out of here, they leave. You know, even though I haven't been up here, I've been following and been watching some of the meetings, and the budget process was kind of interesting, and some of the comments made, and it's funny how there was such concern about expenses and cost and what you get for it, but yet tonight, when you guys were haggling and discussing the, you know, the garbage pickup, there was actually no qualms about paying the more expensive route and having the whole town subsidize a small portion of the town. Well, you know, now, even when I was on that side, I was still a taxpayer, but now I'm a taxpayer, and now I concern, you know, I'm really concerned about what decisions are being made, because to me, that just seems like a real waste of money. I'm really with you on that, Mayor. You know, you should have taken the cheaper route on that one, definitely, especially after the, and I thought that's the way it was going to go, especially after the comments at some of the budget, you know, meetings that I was watching, and some of the comments on the budget, and somebody indecision on the budget, or lack of decision for that matter, on the budget, from some people. Yeah, I got a question. There was an ordinance about something, and something sponsored by what's called the Green Team. Is that actually in the ordinance that it's sponsored by Green Team? Or is that something that says Ringwood Council? What was that before that was voted on?
A $2,000 grant?
Yeah.
They got a $2,000 grant for education and communication with the public and, and, you know, because the Green Team is an advisory committee to the council, the council needed to accept the findings of the team and, and authorize the expenditure, otherwise I didn't have the authority to do that.
Right, and what's the, what is the Green Team?
The Green, well, Kathy can probably explain it.
I thought we didn't do a dialogue.
Oh, okay, you don't have, you don't have to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Councilwoman O'Keefe will, will give a brief explanation of it.
Okay.
It's a statewide program. We were in earlier, too, for, for a spell. We've done some work with those guys, 2011 timeframe, somewhere around there.
All right, awesome. Yeah, that's all I have right now tonight, but, Mr. Heck, good job, DPW, on, on point again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does any of us move the clothes?
Okay, hold up.
Closing public portion?
Second?
I mean, that's what it is. So this was...
So we saw Noonan, Councilman Noonan, Mr. Bolton.
Okay.
Okay, you have the motion in a second. Roll call on closing public, please.
Councilmember Bolton?
Yes.
Davison?
Yes.
Ferretti?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
O'Keefe?
Yes.
And Mayor Spear?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda, mayors and members of the council. Councilman Davison, do you want to start us off this evening?
As usual, I have no report.
Very good.
Too busy down in county.
Keep the lid on it down there. Very good. Councilwoman O'Keefe?
Yeah, do you want to address Mr. Martucci's, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Marsala's question regarding the Green Team? Surprised he wasn't aware that there was a Green Team when he was on the council. Kelly was a member, as were many members of the Environmental Commission. The only difference is that it wasn't active at the time, and it was something that's been in place for a long time. But now I'm happy to report that we have nineteen members that are working hard to find opportunities for the town to give, get access to grants and to lower our cost, and to reduce the municipal cost. So I hope that answers that question. Also, as far as Ned Clausen's comments regarding the downtown, I did reach out to Deborah Hoffman, who's on the Economic Committee for the, I'm looking for the paper right now, Economic Development.
She's, yes.
Yeah, she's the director. She's agreed to meet with the Downtown Redevelopment Committee, John Spear, myself, and Noonan. Shaun, are you on that redevelopment? I'm just trying to recall, I know there was three of us on it.
I make a joke about Jim Marsala?
Yeah, I think I am, yes.
Okay, so there's three of us on there, and Deborah Hoffman is happy to meet with us to find opportunities to think, rethink our business, because it is absolutely true that the old ways of doing business need to sometimes be looked at differently. And so I look forward to meeting with her and Azarian. We had a lot of activity downtown this weekend with the car show and the farmer's market. It was so busy downtown, it was a little difficult at times to find a place to park. But it was nice to see it vibrant. I would hope that in the future, we wouldn't have the parking problem. However, I would like to see that type of activity move across the street, find ways to do that. I know I have spoken in the past about, um, the proposed four-story or high-density housing on Skyline Drive, and it's hard to sit up here and speak contempt, you know, to speak off the cuff and not be misunderstood. So I was really excited when I saw Republican Assemblyman Leader John Brabnik, who was interviewed on Channel Twelve News recently. And he was asked about the same thing that we're facing with the affordable housing mandate requirements that they've been fighting for decades. So what he has done is he has proposed legislation in this area, because he said the towns are fighting back, and the legislature needs to fix it. The judges are deciding how many new units go into a town. He thinks that's absurd, because a judge knows very little about land use. His solution is, um, to come together, decide the best place to build it. He thinks the urban centers need the money, want the money, and they have access to mass transit, trains, buildings that need rehab. And he feels that this directive is gonna have a direct impact on our schools, on traffic in our towns, and also with developers suing the towns. So he feels that municipalities are spending a huge sum of money fighting developers. I think that's not the case here, we're spending a huge amount of money trying to develop. But we need a regional commission made up of mayors, legislators, to get this out of the courts so that we can find a way forward that does rebuild our economic development downtown, because I think all of us want that. But I don't think this, I agree with Republican leader John Brabnik on the best way forward in this area. So I just wanted to clarify. And I also did see recently, you know, there was an article in the record. It was, "Why do property taxes keep going up?" Because that's a concern to everybody in New Jersey, it's happening all the time. This article was written from the desk of Terry O'Connor, she's a big realtor in Burton County and throughout the state. And her first thing on there is the density. New Jersey's densely populated. When you have more people per square mile, it costs more for services and public works, and this adds to our tax burden. It doesn't really relieve it. I've mentioned this before, I've seen it in towns that I've been a part of, where they have lots of density, and it doesn't relieve the tax burden, it just adds to it. But I think a vibrant downtown would help our community, and I look forward to meeting with Deborah Hoffman to come up with a good plan for our redevelopment area. Thank you.
Councilman Bolton?
I'm glad you have not left, because I know that patch on five-eleven, and if you actually drive more towards the shoulder, you can actually get the second set of potholes down the middle and kind of drive cleanly, so. Little survival tip coming out of the Cupsaw area. Speaking of the Cupsaw area, the intersection by Cupsaw Plaza, where you have Cupsaw Avenue, Cupsaw Drive, and Carletondale coming together, and essentially one right-of-way and two yields, if I'm accounting for it correctly, causes a lot of confusion and bad behavior as people drive around. And I don't know if historically, we had looked at maybe installing stop signs there as opposed to yields for the, essentially giving the pure right-of-way to Carletondale. And there, I'm thinking of winter, because you've got the hills, so don't make people stop. They're the ones who can drive and stop the people either heading into Cupsaw Drive or off of Cupsaw Drive, and just giving them full stops, because there's always that awkward car dance of who's gonna go first as you're pulling around. So I don't know if the, uh, the police had looked at that, but if that is something that could be looked at, that would be great. And then in a similar vein, and I know possibly even today, we just talked about this, but, uh, the, uh, speed limit on Stonetown Road. I know that Chief Walker had done an assessment, when you get a chance to actually sit in your own chair in your own office, to, to see what that potential lowered limit could be, would be good.
You're talking about this, this, the study that, that they've done, yes, okay, the study for Stonetown Road?
Correct.
I think they've done a couple of them, I'll, I'll see if we can get those.
In terms of, and I, I want to say it was Mr. Flynn who had brought up the work that O N R was doing. I don't know whose property it is, but I know the, the work that, um, that the DPW had done on the far side of the road to keep the, I'm not gonna use the words right, but to keep the rocks out of the grate and to keep stuff from falling down into the roadway and, and the drains. Is that something that can be done to that part of the property as well? Because I think you had a lot of wood chips.
He's talking about the intersection of Greenwood Lake Turnpike and Skyline Drive.
Not the, um, oh, okay, so I wasn't thinking of like the CLC Island. I was thinking of, um, the bridge by St. Catherine's. Like, they had been doing a lot of tree work along that road, like on, on that part of, uh, Skyline Drive.
Oh, yeah, they're tying the power in right now, so, um, that's actually reservoir property, but we tend to maintain it, like the grass area right next to the, the triangle on Erskine Road.
Yeah, the swale.
Yeah, we, we do a lot of that cleanup, and we take care of a lot of that. You know, we could, we could, we can enhance, I would love to see that all connected, the greenway, from the traffic light all the way to where we ended by Dr., whatever that building is. I would like to see that continued. There is a brook there, that's also the area that I'm talking about, trying to get a pedestrian bridge so that we can get people at the traffic light across. Of course, that would be on Dr. Kay's side, but, yeah, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna move in that direction. We've been cutting it down, but they had a lot of work to do there, so I stopped.
Makes good sense.
So you want to continue the enhancement to the traffic light, is what you want to continue?
Well, knowing, um, I didn't see the end state, I just saw them doing a lot of work there today. They had all the traffic cones set up, and it was all narrowed down. And knowing that we have the wood chips and...
They're tying, they're tying that second grid in that came through the reservoir for power, that's what that is.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Gotcha. Regarding the DPW vehicle in the parking lot, I forgot to make a joke about kicking the tires.
Don't kick them.
Careful.
It would have fallen apart, and that's the joke. All right. Regarding the, uh, the water testing, um, great result. And I think the whole point of testing water is to reassure people that there isn't a problem. And so I think it was a great decision, stand by the fact that we did it, and I think that's the result that everybody wants to see all the time. One, and actually, I'll save it so it doesn't get... If everyone can mark their calendars for September eighth, I mean, I mention that every meeting from now until forever, for our centennial celebration, Volunteer Day, and Ringwood Community Day, and fireworks. Kayla and, and the committee have been putting a lot together, and I think it's gonna be a great day and a fun time for all. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Mr. Foretti?
I do not have much to add. I would like to suggest that we set forth reasonable hours to have these folders delivered to our homes.
To have folders delivered?
Yeah, I was woken up Friday morning at twelve oh six AM, my dog growling because there was somebody on my property, and it was a Ringwood police officer delivering this to my front door with a flashlight.
At twelve o'clock at night?
Twelve oh six.
Yeah, that would, that's, that's a problem.
Yeah, it was, I mean, I was kind of wondering who decided that would be a respectable thing to do, or respectable, or whatever. Rather than looking at who that was, maybe we could just set some hours, you know, like not later than nine, or...
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think we would have to...
I'm fairly open to it, but twelve oh six was a little...
I think setting hours is probably unrealistic. We, I think that rational individual might not have done it, so let me, let me, let me look into that.
Thank you.
Mine showed up at like six or six-thirty, so. And also, shout out for getting it Thursday, especially given the volume, much appreciated. Just not at midnight.
It was a rough agenda, we, we, there's a lot on this agenda. So I apologize for that, there's no reason, anyway, you should not get your door at twelve oh six at night.
There was no knock, for the record. There wasn't a knock, there's definitely dog growling, flashlights, me wondering, you know, like, this guy entered my front door. What's going on here?
You called the cops and the cellphone rings outside the door?
I'll, I'll talk to, I'll talk to the officers. They were probably tied up, but that's, they could have waited till the...
Now, Mr. Noonan?
Briefly, I had the pleasure of representing the council at an Eagle Scout ceremony on Saturday for Griffin Leeds, which was nice, because I was actually club master when he first started his scouting career, and it was great to see him earn his Eagle Scout. So again, congratulations, Griffin. And also, um, slowed down, school's coming out, a lot more people on the roads, nicer weather. And in the extreme weather like we had on Monday, I always say, check on your neighbors, especially the elderly. They might not have air conditioning and so forth, so always look out for your neighbors.
Thank you. We gotta think about making hard decisions about cutting expenses. Our, our ratables are going down. The, the, the costs of running this town are being spread, you know, across fewer and fewer. And we want to try to control costs. You vote no on the budget because of the tax increase and offer no cuts. We have a cut sitting in front of us, or we have to cut some services so we don't have such a terrible increase. And there's no interest in doing that. It's setting us up for, 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 for a tough budget year, and that's just on the municipal side, where we've been, you know, very responsible with, with our tax increases over, over the past ten years or so. And, uh, we're not, uh, I don't think we're doing, doing any favors, we gotta, we gotta work harder at this. I'm, I'm very concerned about our budget going into, going into next year. If there's nothing further, we will adjourn to executive session.
Can we give Paul a prize? Lone survivor?
I give him a prize for going on that school board.
Let's do the vote, and then we, then we turn it off.
We need a motion to adjourn?
We needed a motion to go into executive session.
To go into exec, um, do we, we have, we passed the resolution?
Did you pass that already, Mr. Foretti?
Yes, we passed that resolution during attorney's. So we just, we just kind of adjourned to executive session, and we'll just like spin our chairs and we come back. Executive, ta-da.
The magic of the movie.
Okay, so at ten fifty-two.
Yes, yes.
They maybe, they would offer you a drink instead of a soda every time.
If I did what?
If you weren't so youthful-looking.